We are opening our meeting and calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none of the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn to closed session. See you at 7:00. Thank you. Good evening.
Good morning.
Alba Gonzalez Mares, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alba Gonzalez Mares, y esta es la mesa de educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa, NVUSD, por sus siglas en inglés. La Mesa de Educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión regular esta noche en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota, puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the More button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meeting are Marcy Valdivieso and Paul Huertas. May we have one of the interpreters, please translate these instructions on our English channels so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, esta noche va a haber una reunión de la Mesa de Educación del Distrito Escolar del Valle de Napa. Puede acceder a la interpretación en español haciendo un clic al icono de globo terráneo en la parte baja de su pantalla y escogiendo el idioma español, que va a ser en inglés. Va a estar escrito en el nombre en inglés, Spanish. Igualmente desde el teléfono celular puede acceder a los servicios de interpretación apresionando la tecla con el símbolo de núcleo. No hay servicio de interpretación si usted está llamando de un teléfono regular o línea fija. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Dennis Castro, the Tagalog interpreter. There will be Tagalog speakers listening in as well.
Yes, it is planned for tonight that the Tagalog translation will be available on item J1A. This is the trustee area redistricting based on 2020 census data kickoff presentation. If you will, I will ask you if you could translate and let our Tagalog participants know that the Tagalog service will be available for item J1A and K1A.
I see, okay. Maga tanga bi po sa inyong lahat na nagsasalita ng Tagalog. Ito po ang meeting ng lupon po ng eskwalahan ng Napa. Meron po ang pagsalin sa Tagalog. Magagamit niyo po ang pagsalin sa Tagalog sa pagklik po sa isang tatak ng interpretation, ang pagsaling sa baba ng screen sa Zoom ng aplikasyon. Kung nasa kagamitan mobil po kayo, pwede niyo pong ipinutin 'yung button na More o Mas dun sa baba po ng screen at saka at piliin niyo po ang Language Interpretation o pagsalin ng lingwahe sa aplikasyon ng Zoom. Ito po ang hiwalay na channel na mapapay po sa inyo na makinig po sa Ingles at sa Tagalog na pagsaling na sabay. Patandaan niyo na hindi po available ang serbisyo ng pagsalin kung gumagamit po kayo ng telepono. So, 'yung Tagalog po ng serbisyo ay para sa po sa J1A at saka saka J1A o K1A. Salamat po. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we will continue with having Vera Morales, our Executive Assistant, conduct attendance roll call, please.
Yes, Student Board Member.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Present.
Trustee Jenkowitz is absent tonight. Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Ricer.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the opening meeting rules in the state of California per Assembly Bill 361. I am going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Education trustees and the superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using their raised hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at nvusd.org/Board. All right, we are now going to go next to our item E1, Report on Closed Session Items. Trustee Gracia.
Yes, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED Code 35146 and 48912:20, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078 and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, Student Matters, D dot 1 dot A dot 1, the Board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 10142021D.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
There's a first and a second. And Vera, if you could conduct roll call.
Yes, Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
All right, D1A2, the Board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 10142021E. Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
D1B1, the Board recommends for the expulsion of student 10142021A. So moved?
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
D1B2, the Board recommends for the expulsion of student 10142021B. So moved?
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the next is D1B3. The Board recommends for the expulsion of student 10142021C. So moved?
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
And that ends the report on closed session items.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. We are now moving to our next item, E2. This is our flag salute. I will ask Trustee Water to lead us on our flag salute today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is E3. This is an announcement that this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district's webpage. Next item is approval of agenda. Prior to approving the agenda, I would like to ask the Board that we move item K4A before K1A.
Move to approve with the amendment?
Second.
A first and a second by Trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We need now to move forward with our approval of the minutes. We'll start with our approval of E5A of the September 9 minutes.
So moved?
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Ricer. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, E5B, is approval of the minutes for the September 23, 2021 meeting.
So moved?
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Ricer. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes of the October 7, 2021 meeting.
So moved?
First by Trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by Trustee Ricer. I need to abstain from that. I was not here.
As does our Student Board Rep.
As Emily, this is the October special meeting. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
I mean abstain, sorry. Just mentioned that. All right, thank you. Okay, so next item, E6 is recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Macedi, who is joining us tonight?
Do a shout out here. There's a lengthy list here of participants. I do, it's Ms. Gail Young here from NVA. Ms. Young, can you please raise your hand if you're present? Just want to make sure I don't miss her.
Hi there, I am.
There she is, okay.
Yes.
Hi, Gail, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gail Young. I'm President of Napa Valley Educators Association. And I have to share that we had a really fun, successful middle school mixer today at Redwood Middle School as our middle schools are doing wonderful redesign. It's, I'm just so happy to share that we had a really good time and able to meet our admin and teachers together. It was a great stuff and I hope that some of our board members can join us for the next time, for our next one that should be in January. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Young. That's exciting to hear. Next, I see we have President of NAPS, Ms. Leslie Walder. Is she being promoted, Mr. Michaels?
Okay, good evening. This is Leslie Walder, President of NAPS, the NAPS Association of People's Services. I'm sitting here and joining you remotely. I'd like to say good evening to President Gonzalez Mares, the members of the Board of Education, our student representative, and the administration president this evening.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Walder. We appreciate your presence tonight as well. And I do not think I see him, but let's just do a check. Mr. Hector Gallegos, President of CSCA. I do not see him, Mr. Michaels, but please raise your hand if I'm missing you, Mr. Gallegos. I don't think he's here. So thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Walder for being with us tonight.
You're very welcome, Dr. Macedi.
Thank you, Dr. Macedi, and thank you again for joining us. Right, we are now moving forward with our recognition of students of the month. Tonight, we have Valley Oak High School and Napa Valley Independent Studies. So we will start with Valley Oak High School. I think I already see Principal Cisneros here. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Trustee Gonzalez Mares. Great to see the Board. I see Cindy right there, Trustee Cindy. I'd love to start by first thanking Trustee Gracia, Ricer, and Shu for joining us at Valley Oak High School and doing a tour of the school, spending so much time with me and getting to go into classrooms, talk to students. That was a wonderful two days that we were able to share with the trustees what we do at Valley Oak. So we're very excited to also welcome them over at Independent Studies. I believe some of you will be joining us there if you haven't done so already. So thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come and visit us. Valley Oak, we continue to thrive. We continue to provide a great learning environment for our students. We've had a great start. We have a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful group of young adults that are excited about learning. They're coming to school. And we had the most students in a while that have earned our Level 4 in the pyramid of success, and they earned their off-ground privileges. So we're very excited of the 36 students that achieved 95% attendance or above with a 3.3 GPA or greater and also have shown extraordinary citizenship on our campus. So we're very excited for that. And tonight, we get to honor two of those students that came to us virtually in 2021 and joined us in person this year. And so Jordan Mendoza is our first student. He's teacher to share with us that he's incredible young man. When he was nominated, they said he's, you know, he's at the top of the list, a straight ace at his progress report, engaging and now working to create our yearbook. So he's part of the yearbook staff on campus. I have nothing but great things to say about him from the teachers. But I'm going to actually have Jordan give you a little bit more information about his experiences, but also too what his future plans are. So Jordan, can you unmute and share with us a little bit about you?
Hi, my name is Jordan Mendoza, and I'd like to thank the Board and Napa Valley Education Foundation for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank my teachers and mother. I feel like the reasons I am here today for still in the month of September is because I've changed from the past three years. I was unmotivated to go to school or do my work in my great suffer. I've been trying to change and make myself better by having motivation, going to school, and doing my work to the best of my ability. Ralph Marsden once said, quote, "Happiness is not a choice, not a result. Nothing will make you happy until you choose to be happy. No person will make you happy unless you decide to be happy. Your happiness will not come to you, it can only come from you." And both, thank you everyone for being here and have a good night.
Thank you so much, Jordan.
Thank you, Jordan.
And our next student of the month, we call her Vidi. She, I think she's on here. I saw her name. There she is. What a beautiful soul this young lady is, just like, just like Jordan. That smile of hers is constant. Her integrity, her support of her peers, her willingness to help within the class. She's organized, she's smart, she picks up things very quickly. And she's just a joy to have around campus. As I mentioned, we have just a great group of young, young people at Valley Oak. And she, along with Jordan, just at the top of the line in terms of coming to school, taking care of business. She's also a straight A student at her progress report, and that speaks very highly in terms of the level of engagement within the class, but also too her willingness to help her peers. And so I'm super excited to introduce to you Vidi, Vidi Diana Torres Sandoval, who will be sharing a few words about her experience and also what her future endeavors are. So Vidi, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Hi, I'm Vidi. I want to recognize my parents for never giving up, even when I was on my lowest. Also, my siblings for never doubting that I could be a good student. I want to, I want to thank the Board and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for letting me be the student of the month, but also a school that has helped me a lot. Bella, it has been a good school that has gave me a lot of help. I'm proud to say that I'm student of the month because I've been working really hard by asking questions, staying up late to finish all my assignments and not giving up. Also, when I started going to Valley Oak, I didn't want to go to school and Valley Oak and its teachers made me want to go to school and make me feel like I was at home. I'm proudly to say Valley Oak has helped me to have plans for college and wanting to do nursing. And I'm also really proud to be a straight A student. Thank you for, thank you to the Board and the Napa Valley Education Foundation, my family, and all, and all school staff. Thanks for all the support and how we say in Spanish, mil gracias.
Thank you, Vidi.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you and congratulations to the Valley Oak Students of the Month and Principal Cisneros. Now I'd like to welcome Napa Valley Independent Studies.
And that's me again. I am officially the, the principal over at Independent Studies. As of October 1st, I took on that role, as you know. And so it is a pleasure to introduce to you our September student of the month from, from Independent Studies. But before I do that, I, you know, wasn't, I didn't mean to miss to say hello to everyone. You know, our Superintendent, Dr. Macedi, good evening. I didn't mean to bypass. I was just super excited to share about our students too. So good evening, Dr. Macedi, and everyone that, or NVUSD leadership is great, great to see you tonight via, via Zoom. Our student of the month, Brianna Villa. I, since I just met her literally day before yesterday, had an opportunity to sit with her and her mom and learn a little bit about her and what her future plans are, which, you know, she's got a pretty strong head on her shoulders. She definitely knows what she wants to do and why Independent Studies has been a great program for her since her freshman year. It really turned her life around and allowed her to focus on herself and herself as a person and as a student. And Ms. Suzanne Quinnland, one of her teachers says that, she says, "I don't have heard this year, but had had her for the past two years. She has matured so much since joining the program her sophomore year. She struggled at the beginning to complete work and seemed pretty overwhelmed. By last year, she was always one of the first students to turn in her work each week. She always has a smile and, and a greeting during class, always pleasant and contributes." Ms. Ray Lucero says, "I had Brianna during her ninth and 10th grade years at NVIS in Math 1 and Math 2. During that time, Brianna learned how to become a great student. She wasn't afraid to ask for help and made an effort to get additional support outside of her normal math class. I am proud of the growth she has made during her high school career, and I look forward to hearing about her future and her successes. And I know that Brianna will be graduating at the end of this semester, and so I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about her experience, her future endeavors. And so Brianna, welcome.
Hi, my name is Brianna Villa. It's an honor to be here today and receive this special recognition. I would like to thank both of my parents, Yadira and Betel, for being there for me every step of the way and guiding me through my education. Thank you to all the teachers at Northwood Elementary, River Middle School, and Independent Studies for always believing in me and providing me with an excellent education. Due to social needs, I started my high school education at Independent Studies and hardworking motivation and time management skills led me to be successful and get to where I am today. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Farrell for giving me the opportunity to give back to the community as her assistant at McPherson Elementary School. After high school, I will attend Paul Mitchell Beauty Middle, Beauty School in Sacramento and provide mobile at-home services to my clients. Thank you, NVUSD Board and Napa Valley Education Foundation for your leadership and commitment to all students, staff, and myself."
Thank you, Brianna. And our next student from Independent Studies, Avan. I do not believe he's on here to, oh, he, well, his picture is, but I don't know that he's here tonight, but just.
Cisneros, we do not see him. So just to confirm that, we don't see him on the list.
Oh, okay, okay. So just a couple of things, since I had the teachers write a little bit about him. Adam is a wonderful student in photography, along with his real reliability and work ethic. Avan has a natural eye to see and embrace the elements needed to be a successful photographer. He quickly picks up concepts and is able to apply them immediately to his composition. It is a pleasure to have Avan in class, and I'm so proud of his accomplishments, and this is an honor to celebrate him, and that's from Mrs. Hartman. Or Wilson, Susan Wilson. So that's our Students of the Month for Valley Oak and Independent Studies. So again, thank you to the Board, Dr. Macedi, NVUSD Leadership. We sure appreciate the opportunity to highlight our students every year.
And we love to start our meetings with this, with this. So thank you, Principal Cisneros, and congratulations to the Students of the Month.
Also, just want to thank Principal Cisneros, who's now fulfilling that, that second role. So thank you, Principal Cisneros, you know, she's really overseeing the alternative education programs at Continuation High School and now NVIS at the high school level. So thank you, Principal Cisneros, for bringing your expertise to that, that program.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
And I'll echo that from our Board as well, Principal Cisneros. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
Okay, we are now moving on to the next item of our agenda. This is item G, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Members of the audience may address the Board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The Board will not take action on any issues raised during this section of the agenda inasmuch as Board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Prior to opening it up to our participants via Zoom, I am going to ask Trustee Gracia to please read the public comment received on non-agenda items via our email.
Yes, the following public comments were received by electronic email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 AM this morning. The written format has been forwarded and reviewed by the NVUSD Board of Education Trustees. The first was Karen Brunzel, titled "Thank You," dated October 9, 2021. Next was Paul Hoffman, titled "I Support Your Efforts to Keep Our Kids and Community as Safe as Possible," dated October 9, 2021. Then Michelle Hoffman, titled "Thank You for Helping to Keep Our Kids and Community as Safe as Possible," dated October 10, 2021. Jacqueline Shackford-Jack, titled "Public Comment L1A COVID-19 Public School Mandate," dated October 13, 2021. And Maricela Acosta, titled "Public Comment for October 14, 2021 Meeting," dated October 13, 2021. And that is all that we received as far as written public comment.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Now I will ask Mr. Michaels to please queue in our first speaker.
Yes, first speaker is Shawna Lee Abbott. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I prepared a comment regarding the mandatory COVID vaccinations for our children.
That's for item L1A. We welcome you back during that item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Yes, next speaker is Dan Lince. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I would like to urge the board to approve the My Chemist Charter of Middle School application.
Mr., Mr. Lince, this is, that is item L2A. We welcome you back to speak during item L2A in regards to the My Chemist Charter petition. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Rachel Clark.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Clark, and I was just watching the beginning of this meeting and would like to encourage if they, we do have a tagalog translator that we also give them the ability to have the entire meeting translated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And, and I'm also here for the vaccinations, the mandatory vaccinations.
Okay, we welcome you back at that item. Thank you. Next.
Next speaker is Kathy Margalati.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Kathy Margalati, and I'm a parent of an American Canyon junior and two alumni of American Canyon High School. My children have been raised and attended American Canyon School since 2003. And I'm speaking tonight regarding my concerns with the level of violence and excessive fights that have been taking place on campus this school year. This has never been a concern or the culture of ACHS. Not only is this a distraction and disruption to our students' learning, it's clearly a safety issue for all students and staff. Our schools and district have always had a good reputation for excellent programs and safe campuses. I do not want our American Canyon Schools to become anything less. Bathrooms are being closed for all. School events are being threatened to be canceled for the actions of a few. This is not the answer. What has changed? Is this a result of the recent open enrollment to increase funding for NVUSD? I'm requesting that this please be an agendacized item for future discussion or that a meeting is held for concerned parents and staff in American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Kim Smith. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm here for the My Chemist Charter of Middle School. So do I need to let you know that now or just raise my hand later when that comes?
Please raise your hand when we reach to item L2A.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is named Janelle Mike Selick. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Selick, and I am the parent of four daughters, all in the Napa Valley Unified School District, three at American Canyon High School and one at American Canyon Middle School. I'm speaking up tonight out of concern for campus, campus safety and increasing fights between students at American Canyon High School. The situation seems to be escalating quickly and fights are becoming more frequent. This is not normal behavior for our school. Today, three to five different fights broke out involving one student reportedly being taken by ambulance to the hospital and a teacher getting hurt. In addition, graphic and violent videos are being passed around from student to student perpetuating the problem. Students are feeling unsafe and parents are concerned. Consequences such as closing bathrooms and canceling social events place undue stressors on all students and don't seem to be solving the problem. Rather, the fights are becoming more frequent and more violent. I encourage you to examine the source of these fights, make campus security a priority, and establish a zero tolerance policy for fighting. Furthermore, we need campus supervisors on every high school campuses to provide, help provide a solution to the problem. I applaud your efforts to keep students safe during the pandemic. Now I encourage you to reexamine the most urgent safety concerns at American Canyon High School. Please agendize this topic for future meeting and craft a response to curb the violence that includes a zero tolerance policy for fighting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Lindsay. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so it's interesting that a lot of other parents are speaking about violence in their schools. I am a mom of five. I have three kids in school here in Napa. And my daughters have been experiencing extreme violence in the past two months that they've been in this school. Pulling hair down to the floor, harassment, violent comments. It's just interesting. I was, I was on public comment to ask you all about your masks. Because it's so funny that you're all wearing just such different masks. Is it for show? Is it for science?
I think if you are going to comment on the masks, I will ask you to please join us back.
You know what? You're not allowed to interrupt me, and I know my rights, and I can speak whatever I want. There's no masking agenda. I know your agenda. I've read your agenda. Do not shut me up. You're not allowed to.
Mr. Michaels.
You're not allowed to shut me up. You're not allowed to.
I will not have disruption on this board, and I am allowed to end your comment. If you would like to join us back to discuss or to share your comment about the mask, you're welcome to return an item L1A. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker has the phone number 707-624-5605. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead. Is your mic unmuted? Mr. Michaels.
They've been asked to unmute.
Right, hearing none. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Kasama Lee. Go ahead, please.
Good evening to the board and all audience. My name is Kasama Lee. I am a parent of two students. One is an alumni to ACHS, and the second one is a junior at ACHS. In my, really my experience being involved with the youth, not just in American Canyon High School, but all the other NVUSD schools, when I'm asked to participate and support our youth. I've just never experienced anything like this, and, and it's interesting to hear that it's not just our school, but I think that it's something that needs to be addressed because it is now a health and safety issue, not only for the kids. I'm more concerned about the teachers. And to see that the teachers who are not trained, they did not go to get trained to break up fights, are getting hurt, is an issue to, you know, it's, it's, it's a serious concern to the staff of NVUSD and now to, needless to say, to the students, and I need that, I think that we need to address this and put this on the next meeting's agenda item as it's affecting lives of kids and staff. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Valerie Zizak Morais. Go ahead, please. Actually, this speaker has an older version of Zoom. You, you need to leave the meeting and update your Zoom and rejoin, please.
You can also join us via phone as well. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Susan Bell.
Hello, my name is Susan Bell, and I'm an educator here in Napa. I would like to know if it's common practice for board members to initiate unsolicited email correspondence with members of the public. I received an unexpected and unsolicited email on September 25th and 28th from board member, member Waters. She expressed her regret that I felt it necessary to leave my job with the district, but then proceeded to question my stance on vaccination for students, then gave her unasked-for opinions. On the 28th of September, Mrs. Waters emailed me again. She began to answer questions I had raised at the last board meeting. My questions were asked so that all concerned participants were, were able to hear the answers, not just me. I found it an attack for her to presume I wanted to hear news stories she had heard and seen about COVID. Lastly, she questioned my having COVID and relying on antibodies for protection from further infection. Mrs. Waters, who are you to question my health choices? I ask that you do not contact me, as this is a form of unacceptable bullying based on your point of view. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Francine Mattel. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, it is against the law and against the Brown Act for you to cut off any speaker calling in, anyone. And I demand that you get Lindsay back on the line right now.
Excuse me, that is not true.
It is against the Brown Act for you to cut off any speaker.
Mr. Michaels, please mute the speaker.
Get Lindsay back on the line right now.
Just for, if you want to reiterate, we, the board does have bylaws that allow for us to mute speakers in the remote boardroom format when there is disruption in the, with participants through Zoom. So that is allowed, and we have board law, board bylaws that allow for that. And we will exercise it when necessary. Correct, President Gonzalez-Madrid?
That is correct. We have that authority, and I will execute on that authority. And it is a virtual meeting, and there's the same bylaw that occurs with in-person meetings as well. So this is a meeting that we are conducting. We are conducting business. We have community presence, and we have action items to conduct tonight, and I will execute that by law. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Amy Martenson. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but I want to echo the concerns of the parents that are raising, you know, concerns about increased fighting at American Canyon High School. I work at Napa High School, and while I don't have hard data, I think it would be worth looking at. Just anecdotally, I have been commenting and feeling that there have also been an increased number of fights at Napa High School. In fact, I, I feel like there's been more fights just since the beginning of schools than what I've experienced in my three years. Well, this is my third year of working there. So there's definitely something going on. I think it's worth examining. I don't know what the source of those fights were, but I think it's worth finding out what kids are fighting about. I have a theory that, and I'll talk about it later when we talk about our COVID policies, that maybe perhaps some of the discrimination between the vaxxed and unvaxxed students and parents that we're seeing in our larger society, but also on our campus are perhaps, if not directly causing these fights, they're contributing to them in some way. So I think it's worth examining. I think we should be looking at what these kids are fighting about and also just looking at how our policies that are societal, but that we're also, are coming into the school, are contributing to this, this tension. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is TG. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ty Gaskins. I have a 10th grader at American Canyon High School and an eighth grader on her way there next year. I was also not planning on speaking this evening and was just alerted to the board meeting and popped on on time to hear the public comment and make a comment in support of the other parents who have been on this evening and what they've said. I don't think I could say it any better than Ms. Selick and Ms. Lee said it. I echo what they've said and appreciate their comments and agree that I would like the matter put on the agenda in a future board meeting, and I would like increased security at the school. And I think that that's it. Oh, and I also wanted to say that, I know this is probably not an agenda item for right now, but I agree that you should not take any type of abuse, and you should be able to cut anybody off if you need to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Liberty 2. Go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I just wanted to echo a few, several other callers now with saying, hey, this is not the same as an in-person meeting at all. We're all sitting alone or with our families and on a, some sort of an electronic device, so this doesn't have a very organic feel. Not the same as in-person where everybody can see each other and look each other in the eye and treat each other as real people. So anyways, I did not find the caller Lindsay to be disruptive at all. I think that's kind of a weird reaction to her. I'm not sure the context of your history perhaps, but this is my first school board meeting, and that seemed like a kind of a rude thing. There is a Brown Act, and it does give access to everybody for free speech and to confront people. And you guys in particular right now, in any way that they want to. Nobody was cursing, no one was being rude and cutting people off and interrupting in the three minutes, which we have clearly displayed here for everybody. Let's focus on the time. So anyways, I wish you would let Lindsay speak. She's an incredible person and a strong member and leader in our community, and I'd like to hear what she has to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And just to be clear, she was redirected to speak on the item L1A. So she's welcome to return at that time to speak on that item. That's the clarification being made. So she's welcome back to speak. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker, Sylvia Regalado Zaclo. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. I was not expecting to speak as many others. However, thanks to community effort, we are aware of what's going on in our schools. I'm the parent of three children currently in our American Canyon Schools. One at the middle school and two at an elementary school that is not too far from the high school. I think we have all had an unprecedented year of being apart. Our kids have as well. And the coming together is obviously not coming together as smoothly as it could have. There is a huge, huge amount of demand and stress on our school staff, administrators, to ensure that everything comes together as best as it can, and there's only so much that they can do with the limited resources that they have. Having a resource officer at some of our schools is great. However, again, the resources are really limited. We've had several incidents take place at the middle school. We've now, I actually saw emergency vehicles going to the vehicle this afternoon. And something definitely needs to be done, and what needs to be done, in my opinion, is resources need to be invested into bringing our communities, bringing our students back into the flow of things. And along with other speakers that have advocated for an agenda item, I'd like to do that along with exploring programs like Challenge Day, which is a national nonprofit who has worked to solve some of these issues with youth when they are present. I think that we are at a place where we can nip it in the bud within our communities if we make that investment now. And I know that parents here in this community would be supportive. And I know that parents here in this community would be supportive of that for not only the schools in American Canyon, but for the district as a whole. We really need to provide resources and outlets to teach our kids how to be involved and reengage with each other. I want to thank you for listening to us with regards to this and to take in mind that I think, I do believe the staff is doing as much as they can with the limited resources that are available to them. And to everyone else, I'd like to just remind you that while we are virtually participating, many of us are able to do it for the first time more frequently because of the virtual option. And we're also taking this time to encourage our children to be participatory in this process, to voice and to share their feelings about their education. So anytime that we challenge the board, I think that it's fair to do so on anything, but that we should also take into consideration that there are children that are also listening in and listening to the tones. And I think that that's where us as parents also need to step up and represent that in front of our kids because the kids see that and they will model that. And unfortunately, you know, we can see where that's maybe coming into some of this, you know, tension and stress that's being exhibited through fights. Thank you so much for your time and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Aisley Wallace. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you all for holding your ground tonight, for being in a virtual setting so we can all participate safely and for explaining the bylaws in place to interrupt disruptive speakers. I also just wanted to say thank you to Napa High School, the Napa Police Department and the district for acknowledging the anti-vax and mask protests that occurred near Napa High School campus this past Thursday, therefore ensuring that parents could keep their children safe. And I also wanted to wish you luck during L1A that will occur later tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
There's no further public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. That concludes our public comment on non-agenda items. We will now move forward with our reports. We'll start with our Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Let me queue in our Student Board Rep if she has any items to report tonight.
I initially didn't have anything to report, but upon hearing all of the public comments during the general public comment session and being an ACHS student, I feel obligated to just say something. I think that right now especially, it's been a really stressful time for our students and just for society as a whole. And I think that it's important to note that our students are really struggling maybe with mental health, just with stress of, you know, being in an environment and having to interact with people face to face. It's just a lot different than what we've been going through for the past year and a half. And then I'm very, very thankful for the way that our administration has reacted to these situations. I wasn't there personally today, but I have seen videos and I think that the teachers and the faculty that stepped in into that very intense situation, I think that they're very brave and I know that admin and I know that the ASB team on our campus are working to, having a meeting tomorrow, we're working to find solutions and speak to students about what they would like to see, what services and resources that they would like within our ability. So yeah, that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Student Board Rep. We'll start with our board on their reports. We'll start with Trustee Garcia.
I have a few things to report. On the 28th of October, I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee. On the 29th, the Teacher and Classified Employee of the Year Celebration held at NCOE. On the 30th, I had a great tour of Valley Oak High School. Despite a slight mix-up in our start time, I was greeted by Principal Cisneros and her amazing staff. She led me on a tour of the campus and I had an opportunity to see some of the students in action in their classroom and even got to interact with a few of them in their classes. Some of the students were quite curious about why I wanted to be on the school board and what the school board does. Students were very inquisitive about everything from if I was a dog or cat person to what type of car I drove. I also got to see the life sciences class in action as they were working on moving some shavings around in their garden. After having visited one particular class, the students felt so strongly about a specific topic, they asked me to return to their class so they could make their grievances known. Upon returning to the class, the students conveyed to me they were not thrilled with the quality of food we serve at Valley Oak and were particularly down on the vegetarian burrito. At that point, I asked to visit the multipurpose room and kitchen facility and noted that they are using the warming tray model and don't have a finishing kitchen like some of our other schools. My guess is that this probably accounts for part of the underwhelming food reviews. While in the dining hall, I had noticed that they had decorated for fall and had table pieces and window decorations everywhere. The decorations really had a nice bit of warmth to the room and made it feel much more inviting. Principal Cisneros indicated that the students were scheduled to have nachos that day and that the nachos were in fact one of the meals the students really enjoyed. Just one more confirmation for Nosh that we are obviously doing something right with those nachos. On the 5th, I visited Napa High School and was greeted by Principal Ainsworth. We had a nice discussion in his office before touring the campus. I saw the robotics and math classes in action where it appeared that students were diligently focused on their learning. While on campus, I got to experience milk break and it was really good to see all the students socializing again with each other. A stark contrast to last year when students came to campus, when very few of them came to campus and most of our students were learning remotely. It was great to see so many happy and engaged students going about their day. On the 7th, I visited with Board President and Superintendent of the St. Helena School District ahead of the upcoming CSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting. On the 12th, I attended Alta Heights Elementary where I was greeted by Office Manager Debbie Shivers and Principal Ted Ward. I had a great opportunity to chat with Principal Ward and find out how things were going for him at his new school. He seemed to be settling in and adjusting well to the elementary environment. During our discussion, he conveyed that he really felt the yearly board priorities were helpful to him as a site administrator and they helped to provide clarity around areas of focus for the year. After our chat, Principal Ward took me to visit a few of the classrooms on campus and I got to see some of the students in action. We dropped in on one class that was working on understanding the various parts of a book and it was surprising how many students preferred different parts. Everything from the glossary to the pictures, maps and index were the favorites of various students in the class. One girl liked the index best so that she could find any references to animals in the story because she really likes animals. I asked Mr. Ward if I could see the new finishing kitchen that had just been installed on campus and after a brief stop in the library where I had the opportunity to meet their friendly librarian, I toured the finishing kitchen. I was impressed with how much space they had in the finishing kitchen at Alta Heights. The new kitchen facility and corresponding access ramp looked quite nice. I asked what the kids' favorite meals were and Principal Ward indicated grilled cheese and hot dogs were very popular. When I asked about the nachos, he said that was also a popular choice with the students. On the 12th, I visited with Superintendent of Calistoga Joint Unified ahead of the upcoming Delegate Assembly Meeting for CSBA. On the 12th, I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting. On the 13th, I attended the curriculum meeting. On the 14th, I visited with the Board President of the Howell Mountain School District ahead of the upcoming CSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting. I wanted to report on some advocacy that I had been doing. I had been advocating around AB 438, trying to get the legislature not to pass into law a poorly written bill. Despite my advocacy with his office, Senator Dodd voted for the bill and the governor just signed it into law. I'm disappointed that AB 438 was signed into law. Although portrayed as an equity measure, the bill will create greater instability for schools and the students, students that they serve. By expanding the March 15th certificated layoff deadline to include classified employees, AB 438 doubles down on a bad practice that defies sound budgeting principles, results in more layoffs and creates additional staff turnover for students in need of consistency. While I deeply value the important role classified staff serve, this measure forces the hand of school boards to take actions that do the exact opposite and make the lives of our classified staff much harder. The anxiety of getting a March layoff notice that may or may not be rescinded months later can take a real toll on the mental health of our staff. Just ask the certificated employees who have been noticed in March over the last several years in varying numbers. I am certain that certificated staff can share the unnecessary stress this process creates. To the classified staff in our district, I am sorry that you will now be subject to March layoff notices that likely will become a yearly occurrence as budget uncertainty continues to plague our state. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. Trustee Riser, go ahead.
Let's see, on September 27th, along with Trustee Chu, who's been my site visit buddy lately, I had a wonderful site visit at Napa High School. We were welcomed warmly by Principal Ainsworth and really enjoyed speaking with him about how things are going so far this year. We had a nice campus tour, including the beautiful work being done on the big gym and those glorious windows that are letting in so much light. On September 27th, I also attended the Special Education Community Advisory Committee Meeting. I will report on that later. On September 28th, I participated in the City of American Canyon two-by-two meeting, which I will report about later. I watched the start of the Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting before jumping over to the ACMS African-American Coalition Meeting. I just want to say that Principal Battalier and Assistant Principal Bobby Ruth and the teachers there are just doing wonderful community engagement and having really deep and meaningful discussions about bias and race and how to best serve our students. And I just really admire them for taking that on and really enjoy listening to those conversations. On September 29th, I also attended the Napa County Office of Education Awards for Teacher and Classified Staff Members of the Year. That was a great celebration. On October 1st, Trustee Chu and I attended a site visit at New Tech High School. Thanks very much to Principal Miller for giving us a great tour and again, having just a really good conversation about how things are going and how this school year has kicked off. On October 4th, that was a very busy day. Trustee Chu and I visited Valley Oak High School. Thank you to Principal Maria Cisneros for welcoming us. We then went from there to Vintage High School and were welcomed warmly by Principal Sarah O'Connor and then finished that morning of visits with a visit to the ADAPT program. We were welcomed by Directors Michael Coughlin and Randy Storm and heard a lot from them about the amazing things that they're doing to help our our secondary students that are really in most need of modified educational experiences. Really impressive work that they've been doing for many, many years here in the district, a partnership with Aldeia Children's Services. On October 7th, this was more as a parent thing, but I attended the Napa High School Fall Choir Concert and it was the first live performance for the Napa High Choir back in the district auditorium. And it was just incredibly meaningful to be hearing a regular concert in community and because it was in the district auditorium, they were in their choir finery, their long blue gowns and dress suits and it's just a beautiful experience. Even if I wasn't the mother of some of the singers, I would still probably get goosebumps from those, from that experience. Let's see, on October 8th, we had, Trustee Chu and I had a site visit with Principal Noreen Montgomery at the brand-new sparkling beautiful Napa Junction Elementary School. That was amazing to see the Measure H dollars, you know, in, in action and in there, up, up close and personal in that beautiful, beautiful school and that was really a joy. On October 12th, I listened in on the final Citizen Advisory Committee Meeting and we're going to be hearing a report about that later. And then on October 13th, yesterday, I participated in the Board Advisory Committee for Curriculum and Student Support and I will report about that later as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Riser. Trustee Water?
Okay, well, I've been busy too. On the 24th of September, I went to Bel Air Elementary and took a look around the Special Education Department and where I saw a former student of mine, student teaching. So, and that was fun and it was, I watched, oh, I watched some math lessons and then watched the children go outside and play and they were having fun and just, they looked like they were having a great time seeing each other after all this time. And on the 29th, I too went to Teacher of the Year and it was wonderful to see teachers get recognized and it was, and you know, some from our district. So that was, that was great. And then on the 6th, I went by Phillips School and observed the, a lot of our school parents were attending the vaccination clinic that was also offering flu, flu vaccinations. And on, on the 8th, I actually went out to lunch with an old friend of mine who's on the Sonoma County Office of Education and they have a lot of the same issues we have. Declining enrollment is a big one. And that was fun and renewing an acquaintance. And on the 12th, I too went to the school, virtual school, Citizen Advisory Committee on the school naming. And on the 13th, I attended the curriculum meeting that my colleague will report on. And today, I went to Silverado Middle School where I saw Trustee Garcia's daughter, you know, working hard in her science class and and actually I dropped in with the principal on, Principal Cole, on two, I believe two classes. One was social studies, one was science. And then we went outside and watched the kids playing and witnessed three soccer games. She pointed out how, you know, some of the fields had been fixed up. It was a beautiful day. The children were having a wonderful time and she, and it was clear that this school has a real, they're going to wear your mask and the kids are obeying the rules and there's been, you know, she told me four cases and no in-school transmission. So this is, and they, they all seemed really, really happy and it was, it was a nice day. And, you know, listened to some education podcasts, answered emails, usual.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Chu?
So I basically had the same schedule as Trustee Riser. So I'll say ditto, thank you to all the site principals for allowing us to visit and having us to get to know what, what your school is about. I also, actually I listened in on the curriculum meeting, but only as an observer to make sure we don't violate any Brown Rat Act rules, but I did miss the choir concert. So maybe I'll have to join you next time.
Thank you, Trustee Chu. Trustee Dooley?
So it seems like we're all moving around the district, checking out campuses. I too had a full slate of site visits. This week, I was able to get to six different school sites this week. I started on Monday with Canyon Oaks. Principal Stephanie Vasquez gave me a great tour of a beautiful campus, starting at the center point with the oak tree in the middle. And, and then that afternoon, I visited American Canyon High School with Principal Crystal Lopez. I got to observe a ceramics class and learn about their, they had, this was the first time that they were using clay. They had been doing a papier-mache project prior to that. And I was able to talk with the teacher about the kilns there. And then on Tuesday, the 12th, I visited Pueblo Vista with Principal Helen Roca and I was impressed by the alignment of the curriculum at that school. The, the learning objectives on every board and every class at every grade. board and every class at every grade. And uh, I watched the number corner in Spanish, which was a phenomenal experience because it's not just, you know, reading something, it's, it's actually engaging in in conversation, in uh, problem solving and um, using uh, framework for their, their, you know, presentation in in the class. It's uh, number corner overall is a great thing and seeing it in Spanish was, was pretty cool. On the 13th, I visited MVLA with Principal Alejandro Uribe and was greeted by the uh, sixth grade Corazon Unidos students. Um, they gave me a a kind of rundown of the programs and uh, showed me their avid notebooks and then I got to walk around and see all of that in, in uh, in action in the classrooms. Um, again, there was just great alignment throughout the the whole campus and great uh, resonance among all of the campuses I visited. The 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 same kind of driving force of of uh, was present even with different teaching styles or different uh, you know, administrations and and all that. Uh, then on the, oh, and then that later that day, I visited Napa Junction, the, to see the new uh, campus and Principal Noreen Montgomery showed me around. She too expressed uh, the appreciation of about the board annual priorities and uh, how they, they helped um, support the goals that the, that her uh, teachers and and that her site had developed um, for their their uh, SIPSA and uh, she was just grateful that that she could show her uh, her teachers that what they're doing fits into the bigger picture. Um, and then today I uh, visited Donaldson Way and met with Principal Marilyn Avalon. Uh, toured the campus, uh, their um, their library, which they have a new library tech this year who is doing a lot of good work. Um, making that space and inviting and and welcoming place um, for their students. And yeah, I think, you know, one of the the things that over that short period of time, I was able to kind of compare and contrast campuses, not in a critical way, like, you know, comparing them negatively, but just seeing the the connections that um, run through all of these, these schools and and uh, you know, seeing our work in action, but you know, performed by such wonderful staff and administrators. So, uh, I have only been able to catch the videos of the Citizen Advisory Committee meetings. I didn't catch the the one this week, so I'm excited for the presentation today. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Dooley. All right, that concludes everybody's uh, report on that item. So now we move forward with Board Representative Reports, the Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
Okay, I'll be reporting on that. And uh, brevity is my watchword. Okay. So there were four main topics for our discussion with our curriculum um, and Student Support Advisory Committee. First, we received a brief update from our Special Education Director and NVSD Terry Lynn Rossetti regarding the implementation of the FICMAT recommendations. Um, and she spoke a little bit about an item that we're going to be voting on tonight, which is a contract uh, with Strategic Consultation for Schools to support the staff in making the necessary adjustments. Uh, since the FICMAT was, was completed several years ago, there will be a slight um, a a short period of time spent up, you know, making sure that everything is still relevant and up to date. And then the next topic was uh, Director Sarah Knox provided an overview of tomorrow's amazing professional development uh, conference, NVUSD Con. Um, I was amazed to hear there are 111 different sessions that teachers and staff have to choose from, 172 speakers. And as of yesterday afternoon, I'm sure it's gone up since then, but 821 attendees. She described how the offerings are all framed around seven high leverage practice, practice indicators. Um, and just, it's really represents an enormous amount of work. Um, and as a former teacher, I will say it, it, it represents a real um, respect uh, of teachers as professionals and that, that's something that I'm really proud that our district does. Um, the third item that we discussed came from Director Peter Abud, who led us through some data around our advanced placement courses in the district at our three comprehensive high schools. Uh, we learned which courses are offered, what the participation rates are, um, and even broken down by, by different subgroups. And also what the pass rates are and passing being three or higher out of five for those exams over the last five years. Um, it was the beginning of what I believe is going to be a productive and longer term discussion about the ways that um, advanced placement and um, also cross-registration with Napa Valley College supports our students who are ready for advanced and accelerated instruction. So I look forward to that ongoing unfolding conversation. And then our fourth item, Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings offered us a progress update about the implementation of our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, explaining that it's not really a standalone initiative. It's more something that's really integrated into everything that we do here in the district at every level TK to 12. Um, and as one example that was highlighted in the presentation, we had two guests who've been partnering with our district. Um, Lilia Heine and from First Five California and Aunt of Cowie Hem Street from the Rainbow Action Network have been working with Director Manning um, on a project called the Rainbow Kits for classrooms. This is a project that began with preschools in the valley. Um, last year, more than 250 early childhood educators received training and more than 80 rainbow kits were distributed to classrooms. And the rainbow kits are classroom, are are kits that have mostly uh, books for classroom libraries that come with developmentally appropriate lessons uh, with the aim of just making sure that our classroom libraries are representative and inclusive of all kinds of families. Um, really underscoring that the idea, um, the idea that love is what makes a family. Um, and then Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings also spoke to the work of diversifying our secondary curriculum and we've had many discussions here in our meetings in the past about that. Um, and also about the, the uh, decision to be offering more and more professional development on having culturally responsive classrooms. And um, if you have a chance to check online of the offerings for the NVUSD Con tomorrow, I know many of us are going to be attending sessions. It was really hard to choose, but there are among those offerings many that are, um, that would fall under that umbrella of professional development to have more culturally responsive classrooms. Uh, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Riser. We will now um, continue with Facilities and Technology Committee.
We have not met.
Have not yet met. Okay, Finance Committee?
We have not met.
Correct. Policy Committee?
We.
Special Education?
Okay, that's me again. So, uh, we did meet, um, and let's see, the highlights from that meeting, um, uh, Ginny Maywald, our Selpa Director, let us know that SB 639 was signed into law. This is a really wonderful news for um, our community. It ends the discriminatory practice of paying disabled workers less than a minimum wage. She underscored that California is a leader in disability rights and that signing this into law is another example of being on the forefront of that movement. She also shared that our um, local organization, which is um, a parent advocacy group, Parents Can, was um, one of only 21 groups of its kind in the state to be federally funded for another five years. So that's great news. Um, our parent co-chairs of that uh, committee, Amy Barbieri and Darcy Storm reminded everyone because it was our first meeting of the school year, that the mission of the Community Advisory Committee is to focus on communication, education, and empowerment to equip parents in supporting the needs of their children in special education. To that end, Parents Can is making some short videos in English and Spanish and they're chunking it into small sections of content to um, help parents unpack the alternate dispute resolution process. Um, and the Selpa is also involved in professional development trainings for speech therapists and school psychologists. Um, in previous meetings, uh, I think it was in particular, Darcy Storm had emphasized the need to have professional development for general education teachers to help them feel more comfortable and better equipped to support special education students when they are in general education settings. And also to just broaden their understanding and awareness of what special education students are capable of in a general ed setting. Um, and to that end, our Director Terry Lynn Rossetti is giving a session during the NVUSD Con tomorrow uh, to specifically with that goal to support general ed teachers in understanding if you have a student with an IEP and how to modify and support um, for those students to be successful. And I will conclude by congratulating um, NVUSD's Director of Special Education, Terry Lynn Rossetti. She was named Special Education Administrator of the Year for our region by the Association of California School Administrators. Um, and so just another uh, another reason for us to be thankful for her hard work. This concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Riser. City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives?
Okay, that's me again. Boy, okay. Um, we met with our uh, the two by two with our uh, two electeds from American Canyon, the City Council Member Pierre Washington and uh, Mark Joseph, um, as well as the City Manager Jason Hawley and our NVUSD staff. And uh, we used the opportunity of this last meeting to review um, three sites in American Canyon, the Canyon Oaks, um, American Canyon Middle School, American Canyon High School, and really doing a deep dive on our very detailed um, and and uh, all encompassing maintenance and modernization plan that Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson has spent so much time putting together, really looking at what the projected um, needs are for, and as we've discussed in previous meetings, there, there have been divided into sort of level one, warm, safe and dry need, and then level two and level three um, upgrades and repairs that need to happen. Um, and so it was really uh, good to have that chance to to kind of go into depth with the elected officials in the American Canyon about what the facility's needs are at the sites in American Canyon. Um, and this concludes my report. And it's the last one.
Thank you, trustee Riser. Okay, we now, um, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives?
Okay, I know this is going to be a shock, but we have not yet met.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. Now we're on to item H3, which is a Superintendent and Executive Staff Report.
Um, good evening, NVUSD community. I want to thank the parents who brought their concerns tonight to the boardroom regarding safety on our campuses. Safety on our campuses is something um, me and my administration take very seriously. So I want to reassure the parents that we will be following up with a plan to ensure that the school, specifically American Canyon High School, has the support that it needs in order to make sure that our community there feels safe. With that being said, I'll continue with my report that um, I drafted for this evening. Um, the theme of my superintendent report tonight is co-creation and co-production. These last couple of weeks, I've been amazed numerous times watching the work of our board priorities unfold. Not in isolation in the district office, but rather in partnership with our community and school site staff. And it was so great to hear from many of the trustees who are doing an amazing job of being in the field and visiting our sites that they're receiving that affirmation as they engage with the staff at the, um, at all of our schools. When I mention co-creation and co-production, I think about watching the Citizens Advisory Committee where staff worked closely with members from our community to name the new middle school language academy. The co-creation of the name included partnering with students at our dual immersion schools to get their input and young person's perspective on this very important decision. You will be hearing about that later in the agenda. I've also observed co-creation and co-production with our middle school design team, who will be participating in another design drive tomorrow. In this setting, school site staff, district office staff, community members, parents, and most importantly, again, our students are co-creating and co-producing the future of our middle school programming for the Napa Valley Unified School District. Tomorrow is an exciting day in NVUSD. While our students get a rest day at home, we will be hosting our district-wide professional learning day. Unlike many other districts where these days are loaded up with training from outside vendors and consultants, I can proudly say that the day has been co-created and co-produced with NVUSD's own staff. Tomorrow, we have NVUSD administrators, classroom teachers, teachers on special assignment, counselors, social workers, and other staff delivering the majority of the professional development sessions. We are leaning into learning, that's the title of the day, together, all while building our internal capacity for educational equity and excellence. I want to thank the board for establishing the six annual priorities in order to advance implementation of our strategic plan. As I interact with staff and even parent leaders on different committees, they appreciate the focus and the clarity about where the district is headed. This focus and clarity have shaped these co-creation and co-production opportunities within the Citizens Advisory Committee, the middle school redesign efforts, and the professional learning day. So thank you, trustees. We know that when we work in partnership to co-create and co-produce with our school communities, our families and our students around focused efforts, the quality of our work in the district improves tremendously and our potential is endless. I also want to say that I've been um, fortunate in the last couple of weeks to do school visits and reengage in school visits. And I had a, the best time at um, McPherson. So I just want to let you know that um, played a little bit of football um, on the field there at recess, lunch recess with um, the fourth graders at McPherson. It's probably one of the happiest moments of the last nine months. Um, broke out a little bit of a sweat in my um, professional attire. That was fun. And uh, the best part of it was when one of the fourth grade boys said to me, Dr. Rossetti, when are you coming back? So, um, it warmed my heart. So I'm grateful to be here and I want to thank all of the public for joining us this evening. With that, I'm going to pass it on to my assistant superintendents, who are going to report on the work happening in their respective divisions. Let's start out with Mr. Rob Manguala, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Today I had the opportunity to substitute teach in a sixth grade classroom at American Canyon Middle School. I'd like to thank Ms. Carlisa Battalier for this opportunity, the students were fantastic. I mean, I had a great time working on a writing assignment. So, I I didn't realize how much I really missed this. So this is a truly wonderful reminder uh, of why we work in a school district. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, the enrollment team is working diligently to prepare for open enrollment and provide a high level of customer service to families that are impacted by middle school redesign. The enrollment and data teams are are working extensively to ensure a smooth transition for families. This is especially true for the families currently attending River Middle School and Harvest Middle School. Based on the data, we will have space for all the students that are participating, participating in the dual language immersion program along with space for the current sixth and seventh grade students at River. We are very happy about this and we know that this is the least disruptive for families. This means that students that are currently attending River will be able to finish up their middle school experience at the New Language Academy if they choose to. We anticipate the total enrollment will be between 580 students and 608. The enrollment team will contact impacted families by October 26th. I would also like to announce receipt of a charter petition and the review timeline. On September 15th, 2021, the district received a petition from Napa Foundation for Options in Education posing to open a new independent charter school in the district. The proposed name of the new charter school is My Camus Charter Middle School. The petition calls for opening a new charter middle school in Napa in the fall of 2022 with enrollment of 180 students and increasing enrollment each subsequent year until it reaches full enrollment of approximately 336 students in the year 2025, 2026. The district's petition review process is governed by education code. Under that process, the board must hold a public hearing on the charter petition within 60 days from receiving the petition. At that hearing, the board will consider the level of support for the petition by the district employees, parents, and any members of the public. That public hearing will be held at the board meeting on Thursday, November 4th. At the Thursday, December 9th board meeting, staff will present their findings and recommendations to the board. The charter petition submitters will also have equal time to present at this meeting. The board uh, will then The board will then vote whether to grant or deny the charter at the same meeting. Meanwhile, district staff will conduct a full review of the charter petition. The purpose of that review is to analyze whether the petition meets the standards under the education code for establishing a new charter school and whether forming the new charter school will be consistent with sound educational practices, practices and the interests of the community. At the end of the review, at the review process, district will publish its findings and recommendations on the petition. At least 15 days before the board meeting, the board will vote on the petition. The date for the publication of staff findings will be on or before Wednesday, November 24. The district has posted the budget, the charter petition, appendices, and assurances on its website for review by the public, along with a brief, brief overview of the petition process. The specific web address is www.nvusd.org/charterschools. Any members of the public, including district employees or parents, are welcome to come to the November 4th board meeting to make comments on the petition at the public hearing. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. Next we'll have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the instructional services division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Maraes, Board Trustees, Student Board Representative, Dr. Mosetti, and the NVUSD community. Tonight, I'd like to highlight the social emotional learning or SEL work that is happening in our schools. This year, our middle schools are using three signature SEL practices schoolwide, such as welcoming routine or ritual, classroom engagement practices, and an optimistic and closed to the class period. Additionally, second step, a modern SEL curriculum that is responsive to the needs of our students and educators is being used in all of our middle schools during advisory or homeroom time. Second step is underpinned by the latest research in adolescent brain development and social psychology. We know that strong leadership is critical for SEL implementation. So during our district-wide professional learning day tomorrow, there is a session targeted specifically for our site leaders. And this is the kickoff to a year-long SEL-focused professional learning series for our site leaders on emotional intelligence leadership foundations. And then speaking of our professional learning day tomorrow, which we are all super excited about. We all love learning and we're looking forward to leaning into learning. We are kicking off the day with a keynote address by Dr. Victor Rios, who will focus on equity in practice and what that looks like for one student at a time. So we're all eager to hear from Dr. Victor Rios. Additionally, work continues to move forward as we redesign our middle school programming, which is board, annual board priority number one. The citizen advisory committee that several people have already referenced conducted their final meeting on Tuesday, and you will hear the name recommendation tonight. I want to take this opportunity to thank the committee members and all of the community input that allowed for an inclusive and thoughtful process in support of a school focused on strengthening our TK12 dual language immersion pathway. Tomorrow, the middle school design committee will come together to finalize the vision for all NVUSD middle schools and continue to design the programmatic elements of our middle schools. Thank you to the student staff and site leaders and district staff who are participating in this design drive process tomorrow. The, are we held our first D-LAC meeting of the year on October 6th? The meeting was well attended by D-LAC representatives and district staff and site leaders and community liaisons. Our D-LAC president, Elba Marquez facilitated the meeting and did an exceptional job. She also took a moment to celebrate the progress that we have made in forming a fully functioning, parent-led NVUSD D-LAC. Additionally, NVUSD has partnered with On the Move and is providing leadership training to current and potential future D-LAC leaders. We look forward to sharing more about this program at future meetings. And finally, in alignment with NVUSD's strategic plan goal number one, focus on supporting college and career readiness and goal number five, increasing institutional access to historically underserved students. NVUSD provided all 11th grade students the opportunity to take the preliminary SAT and national merit scholarship qualifying test exam on, that just happened yesterday. It was during the school day, it was free of charge, and we tested close to 100, I'm sorry, 1,200 students. I want to take again the opportunity to thank our site and district leadership, especially our site principals and assistant principals who made it possible for the testing to occur and for it to go smoothly. And with that, that concludes my report.
Amazing. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings. Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the human resources division.
Hi, good evening, President Gonzalez-Maraes, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mosetti, and Student Board Representative Bit. Earlier this week, we held the first of two drive-through TB risk assessment clinics for our employees. The tuberculosis risk assessment is required for every four years for a public school employee. And we have been offering the annual screening opportunity to our employees for years, but last year we turned it into a drive-through event out of necessity. But it was so easy and efficient for our employees that we have continued the format. If you missed the first one this week, no worries. You have one more opportunity on November 10th from 11 to 5 right here in the Ed Center parking lot. And just a big thank you to Cheryl Anderson in HR for organizing the event. I also, I don't want to be repetitive, but I just want to highlight a couple of things that were mentioned earlier. One was the root beer social today at Redwood Middle School. That was brought to you by Napa Valley Educators Association, President Gail Young and her board. Also with the help of our Secretary of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, Monica Ready, and the middle school principals. I want to thank them for providing this opportunity for all of our middle school staff members to get together. And this was done by a request of theirs to be able to have an opportunity to get to know each other better, see each other's schools and, and lay the foundation for continued future opportunities for collaboration and teamwork across all of our middle schools. The teachers that I spoke to at the event all expressed gratitude for the time to visit and really get to know each other. I also would like to say how excited we are about tomorrow's professional development day. And I just want to highlight the efforts to include our classified employees with relevant content for their positions as well. So our keynote speaker, Dr. Victor Rios, will be sharing a powerful message that really applies to all of our NVUSD employees about how to support, to support our students emotionally. And then he's going to follow this up with a special breakout session for classified employees to explore how they make a difference in the lives of our students through their various roles and duties that they fulfill. And then afterwards, a lot of our operational leaders are providing specialized training and learning opportunities for the classified employees in their departments. We worked hard to make sure that classified employees knew of the opportunity, and even though it's not a workday for some of our classified employees, normally they are invited, they can choose to be either compensated hourly, or they can put in for some professional growth credits, which ultimately turn into salary credit for them down the road. So we're just very happy to see all of our employees coming together tomorrow and learning, engaging, and we wish everybody a wonderful event. And this concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next we have Mr. Pearson, Assistant Superintendent of the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Maraes, NVUSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Mosetti, Student Board Representative Emily Bit, and members of the NVUSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you, each of you, with an update on operational services. Tonight, I'm going to focus my update on celebrating our NVUSD operations team, which comprises our custodians and service and supply employees. If you did not know, Saturday, October 2nd was National Custodial Appreciation Day. NVUSD celebrated this important milestone on Monday, October 4th. Throughout the entire day, Director of Operations Gloria Aguirre visited every school site to present each custodian with a certificate of appreciation and join the celebration held at almost every school site honoring our hardworking custodial staff. As a reminder, our custodians are the employees to keep our schools and workplaces running smoothly. Much of the custodial work is done behind the scenes and or after hours when no one is around to appreciate the hard work exhibited day in and day out. In response to NVUSD's strategic goal number four, which is tactical, proactive, and efficient asset management, specifically section four states a focus on school cleanliness, which is our custodians, which our custodians work tirelessly to ensure our schools are clean, safe, and ready to start each school day. In addition, our custodians demonstrate their commitment to NVSD's strategic goal number one of student learning achievement and access. Our custodial staff takes great pride knowing they have an equally important role in ensuring all students can learn at high levels by providing a conducive and welcoming work environment and learning environment on a daily basis. Again, under the supervision, again, under the supervision of, I cannot thank the NVSD custodial staff and Director of Operations Gloria Aguirre enough for their dedication, commitment, and hard work to keep our public facilities in tip-top shape. Even though October 4th has passed, I would like to encourage students, staff, parents, and community members to offer praise and gratitude to our incredible custodial staff. The next time you see a staff member, your acknowledgement will be greatly appreciated. This concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Dr. Mosetti. Next item is the facilities and bond program update. Mr. Pearson?
Yes, thank you, President Gonzalez-Maraes. I'd like to introduce Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services, Kelly Jorgensen, who is our Measure H Bond Program Manager. And she is going to give you a facilities and bond program update for Measure H. So Kelly, if you'll take it away, please.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you trustees and Dr. Mosetti for having me back for this report. Today, we will be discussing the American Canyon Student Commons Project. And we just wanted to take an opportunity to give the public and the board an update on the tremendous progress that we're making at the construction site there at American Canyon Middle School and give you a little sneak preview on what's planned for next summer as we plan on rounding out the project. So here is a quick look at the progress that's being made on site. It's pretty exciting because now you can start to see the shape of the building and how it's going to take form on the campus. We are currently installing underground utilities. And as you can see, doing a lot of framing, we are framing exterior walls, interior walls, and applying sheer ply, which you can see there in the pictures, forming the exterior of the building. Getting started on structural is pretty exciting as we can start to see where people are going to enter the building. And in the top picture here, you can also see the V shape that the building's going to have and where the indoor-outdoor space, the covered lunch eating area is going to be. So we're really excited about the progress that's happening on the site. And we also wanted to give a little sneak preview on what's going to be going on next summer on the campus. In addition to completing the work on the building, we're also going to be doing a lot of transformative work on the rest of the campus. This includes a full update of the central quad area. You can see here that we're going to be doing some outdoor learning areas, creating those with landscape and different textures throughout the site in the little U-shaped quads that are kind of naturally there on the site, taking advantage of that. We're going to be developing some gathering spaces on the site. As I mentioned before, there's a sort of a V-shaped indoor-outdoor space for eating. And we're also going to be doing a new coat of exterior paint campus-wide on the site. So it's really going to take that new building and tie in the rest of the facilities. And so that's a lot of work that's planned next summer. Right now, we're really focused on just building the main structure, but we wanted to let everyone know what's going on there. And in that exterior upgrade, we've given a lot of thought to how we can integrate PE spaces into this campus so that the students and teachers at American Canyon have a little bit more opportunity to conduct PE in some outdoor spaces. And we're doing that in a couple of different ways. We're going to be offering fitness equipment, age-appropriate. And we're in the process of selecting that equipment, working with staff on site and our design team to lay it out as best as possible and select the equipment that's going to be most effective. Right now, you can see some of the fruits of our brainstorming sessions. The layout and the types of equipment that we're going to be using have not been finalized yet. But we wanted to let everybody know that we're in the process of doing that work so that we're ready for installation next summer. And we're also going to be providing covered areas. So if there is inclement weather, there's still an opportunity to do outdoor PE activities. And we wanted to talk to you about an upcoming event that we'll be doing at the campus. It is a tradition in bigger construction projects to do what's called a beam signing. And what we do is at the completion of the structural elements of the project, we take one main beam and we invite members of the given community to sign the beam and kind of memorialize that milestone in the project. So at school sites, we often encourage the kids to come and do a beam signing. We're going to do a little adjustment to that due to COVID regulations. We're going to have a select group of students representing all of their classmates and doing some representative signing. And then we're going to have video of the event and we're going to have photos to share with the greater community. So we're really excited that we at least get to do some kind of celebration and memorialize this long-awaited project and really to kind of thank the community there at American Canyon Middle School for their patience and their diligence as we work through the construction on their site. Because we've been quite impactful. While we do this work, we're going to make sure that we're keeping student safety at the forefront. We will have an area just outside the construction site to do the beam signing, and then the contractor will take that beam back and it will actually get placed in the building. So students will know that what they sign will be there forever. So pretty exciting. This is just an example of a signing that we've done on another site. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Mr. Pearson. Any comments or questions?
I did have a question. I, I wanted to know where are those large covered PE structures and that, I guess, play equipment going to be located on the campus?
Trustee Gracia, they're going to be going approximately directly behind the administration building there. It doesn't appear, if you've been on campus, that there's a tremendous amount of space, but we remember we're removing the library once we're done using it as a cafeteria this summer. And there is ample space to provide some covered areas for physical education activities.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Right, we'll move on to our next item, which is approval of consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. Common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of item or items requested by the board member or members.
Yes, I would like to pull item I to A for discussion and then move to approve the remainder.
We have a first by trustee Gracia.
I'll second.
The second by trustee Chu. Vera, Mr. Michaels, do I have any public comment on approval of consent agenda items?
We do have a public comment. The first commenter, phone number 707-624-5605. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead. Is this phone number ending in 5625? You may speak. Mr. Michaels, are they unmuted?
They have been asked to unmute.
Okay. Hearing none, I will close our public comment for our consent agenda. We had a first and a second. And I will ask Vera to conduct a roll call, please.
Hold on one second. Mr. Michaels, do we have one more hand up? I see.
Oh, we do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Shauna Lee Abbott, go ahead, please.
Okay, everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm the mother of two children here in Napa, and I prepared a comment regarding the mandatory COVID vaccinations for our children. I will start by.
Ms. Abbott, this is in regards to item L1A. We are right now conducting public comment for the consent agenda. So you're welcome to return for item L1A.
Okay, I keep raising my hand to be part of that agenda item and I keep getting called.
We're not, oh, you, you, I recommend you raised your hand down for now until that I, item, until we arrive into that item in the agenda, then raise your hand at that time.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome. Is there other public comment on consent agenda items? This is items I of the agenda.
There is no more public comment for this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. I will now ask Vera, since we had a first and a second, to conduct roll call, please.
Yes, student board member?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Maraes?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you, Vera. So we now go to item I two A.
Yes, this is the two year extension of the STAR assessment, and I was pleased to see this item on the agenda. I appreciate us continuing to use the same testing software so that we can build up some meaningful data over a three year period and give staff a real chance to get comfortable with the software. I hope that the STAR training will continue so that we can teach folks how to use some of the advanced features in the STAR suite. And I would like to have a comprehensive review of the program near the end of year three prior to its renewal by the board. But with that, I would motion to approve it.
The first by trustee Garcia.
Second.
The second by trustee Water. Do I have public comment on item I two A?
There is no public comment for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Vera, if you could conduct roll call, please.
Yes, student board member.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Garcia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We are now moving forward to item J of the agenda. This is presentations and discussion items. Item J one A, this has to do with trustee area redistricting based on 2020 census data kickoff presentation. I am going to make us some instructions here in English that will be translated by our interpreters tonight. We had introduced earlier our Spanish interpreters as well as our Filipino Tagalog interpreter. But like we like to make it more clear that we have Tagalog interpretation for this item. Interpretation in Tagalog is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Tagalog translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreter for tonight's meeting is Dennis Castro. May we have Mr. Castro please translate these directions so our Tagalog speaking families can hear the instructions.
Welcome to your board meetings today. Available is the Tagalog for the board meetings today. For the use of the Tagalog app, you need to click on the interpretation or the tag. It's on the bottom of the screen in the Zoom application. If you have a mobile, you need to click on the more or the other button on the bottom of the screen. And then you need to click on the language interpretation or the Tagalog. From the Zoom application. This is a channel that will allow you to use the Tagalog. The Tagalog for the board meetings. So remember, the interpretation is not used if you have a telephone. The Tagalog is available today. So use the Tagalog app. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, President Gonzalez Mares, I just want to make clear to the trustees and the public. So our practice, this is topic of redistricting tonight is our kickoff as President Gonzalez Mares described and the agenda reflects. And the reason we have Tagalog translation present for item J one A tonight and K one A, this will be our practice with our redistricting work. And we went through this prior to the 2020 census data being available. I want to say a year and a half ago. It's hard to think about time the last couple of years, but I think it was within the last couple of years that we did that. And it is our practice, given as we look at sort of communities of the interest. It's important to recognize that in the American Canyon community, we do have a statistically significant Filipino community demographic languages Tagalog. And so we are just moving forward with the practice that we enacted a couple of years ago. And so all of our materials that are available on our redistricting 2021 webpage have all of the material translated into three languages, which is English, Spanish and Tagalog. And we typically provide all of our material in English and Spanish because of the significant statistically significant Spanish speaking community in our district's demographic. But given the special topic of redistricting and the Filipino Tagalog speaking community being representative in American Canyon for this topic, we include the third language of Tagalog in all of our material and dissemination of information related to this topic. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I think with that, I'd like to invite our consultants.
Dr. Mercedes, before we continue, I think before we get onto the presentation, we are reaching our two hour break. And so I think we've made a connection that we will get started soon. It's a quick five minute break for those who are joining us for the first time. Perfect. It allows our board to physically and be able to sit here for for the many hours that we've been here and the many hours that will be here later tonight. So we will return in five minutes. And and now we have our interpreters to please translate this instruction and please don't go away. We'll be right back. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. And just to recap, we are on item J one A in regards to trustee area redistricting. And we have introduced our interpreters of tonight. And Dr. Mercedes, if you can take us to the next.
Yeah, I just, thank you, President Gonzalez Mares. I'd like to invite our partner in this critical work around redistricting 2021 based on the 2020 census data. So tonight's our kickoff presentation. And so with that, I'm going to toss it over to Ms. Corinne McDonald. Welcome, Corinne.
Thank you so much.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here and good evening, President Gonzalez Mares and trustees, Dr. Mercedes. It's wonderful to see all of you. And again, thank you so much on behalf of myself and my entire team for for asking us to work with you again. We're really happy to do this. And my colleague Tamina in particular has just sent me a message and said to say hello to all of you. And with that, I would like to share my screen if that's okay. And we can go through this PowerPoint that we put together for you. So let me see. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So this is a little PowerPoint, as I said, that we've prepared for you to walk you through the process, the criteria and the data. And many of you who have participated in the last, in the last process not too long ago, as Dr. Mercedes said, may recall some of these criteria. The process is very similar, though we're now in a little bit different space. So let me walk you through it and I will be here to discuss with you whatever questions you have and whatever you would like to discuss once I'm done with this PowerPoint. So thank you again. Today's agenda for this topic is first a little introduction and a background to the topic. Then we'll talk about what redistricting is. Then we'll talk about the laws governing redistricting, moving into the criteria for redistricting, then a quick process timeline and discussing a little more about how to get involved and how to participate. So by way of introduction and background, in 2020, so really not very long ago at all, the Napa Valley Unified School District transitioned from at large elections to trustee district based elections. And that move, of course, was prompted by action brought under the California Voting Rights Act, just in also abbreviated as CBRA. And as probably all of you know, there are many, many jurisdictions throughout the state that have transitioned from at large to trustee or by district based election systems due to demands raised and concerns raised under the California Voting Rights Act. Napa Valley Unified School District has seven trustee areas. Napa Valley Unified School District has seven trustee areas for the Board of Equal Education. And the trustees must live in their trustee area to be eligible to represent it. The voters then of each trustee area elect the trustee for their trustee area. And that is called a by-trustee election system. So districting versus redistricting, we thought it might be important to just make that distinction. Districting is generally the process of creating trustee areas or districts where you did not necessarily have any before. And redistricting is the process of then adjusting the existing trustee area boundaries. Redistricting usually happens every 10 years after the release of the decennial census data. And this was a little bit of an issue this time. Of course, we are now in the redistricting period, but the census, as you know, was being collected just as COVID started. And because of that, there were significant delays in collecting the census and then also in processing the census data and then in releasing the census data. So as a result, all of the redistrictings up and down the state of California and in fact, throughout the United States have been delayed because the data were released much later than had been anticipated and much later than these data are usually released. So in a normal census cycle, we would have expected to get these data by March or in March of the year ending with one. So basically this year earlier in March and we actually did not get the census data until late August. And then we didn't get the census data in a format that was usable. So California took the extra step of reformatting the data so that everybody could get started. Because what the census had released was just not a very user-friendly format at all. And so as a result of all of that, we were able to get started a little bit earlier because the census also released a dataset that was properly formatted, but that didn't come in until just a few weeks ago. So so essentially we're here now and luckily we have a little bit of time. We're not we don't have the same timeline as city, as some of the counties do. Most of the counties, for example, in California, they have to be done in December. And Napa Valley Unified has a little bit more time and doesn't have that same level of pressure. So we have some more time for public engagement and all of that, which is of course fantastic. So again, looking forward to working with all of you on that. The decennial census data are used to what's called equalize the populations of the district. So basically to make sure that when we're done, there will be roughly equal populations in all of the trustee areas. Redistricting provides the opportunity to bring the existing trustee areas into compliance with all of the redistricting criteria. So it's just an every 10-year opportunity to take a look at the criteria and make sure that the compliance is still there and then also equalize the population so that there is not one district that has many, many more people in other districts that have many fewer people in comparison to the others. There are quite a few laws that govern redistricting and they mostly have to do with the US Constitution. That is where we get population equality first and foremost. And there is federal law, which is the Voting Rights Act. And in this case, we're not talking about the California Voting Rights Act anymore. We're actually talking about the Federal Voting Rights Act. So the California Voting Rights Act really just governs the the districting piece, the, you know, from going from at-large election systems to by-district or by-trustee area election systems. And then once that process has finished, we're in federal Voting Rights Act land essentially. So the Federal Voting Rights Act applies here to this process as does California law. And I will go through this in a little bit more detail now. So we get our mapping criteria from these various sets of laws. So federal law gives us compliance with the US Constitution, of course, and there we're mostly talking about equal population. So as I mentioned, equalizing the populations amongst the districts, making sure that when we're done, there is not one district that is really far overpopulated and another one really far underpopulated. Then there is compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which protects racial and language minorities. And then there are non-federal traditional redistricting criteria and those include, for example, contiguity, respect for communities of interest, compactness. And other criteria include topography, geography, cohesiveness, integrity and more. And those are criteria that to some extent you will find in any redistricting throughout the United States, really on any level. There is a lot of overlap there. There are sometimes some change, some some variations in the way that they're perhaps ranked. And in this process, they're not ranked. But which means that it's basically federal law, of course, needs to be complied with. And then the Federal Voting Rights Act, but then after that, there is no ranking amongst the criteria. Then there's also the California Education Code for school districts and we put this, the applicable section into this slide so that it's a reference point for everyone. And section five zero one nine point five of the ed code reads that the population of each area is as nearly as maybe the same proportion of the total population of the district as the ratio that the number of governing board members elected from the area bears to the total number of members of the governing board. And then the population of each area is as nearly as maybe the same proportion of the total population of the district as each of the other areas. And that, of course, is a very comprehensive, shall we say, way of saying that the equal, that the districts need to be equally populated when you're done. So so with that, let's go to our criterion number one, which is equal population and talk about it a little bit more. The United States Constitution requires that trustee areas have reasonably equal populations and sometimes in short form, this is referred to as one person, one vote. And I'm sure many of you have heard that term. And the fourteenth amendment is the equal protection clause also factors into redistricting in that it prohibits intentional discrimination because it's a violation of equal protection. If you intentionally discriminating and it would mean that the jurisdiction is treating residents differently because of race and thus not according them equal protection under the law. The fifteenth amendment also factors into redistricting in that it bans racial discrimination in voting. And of course, we're talking about trustee areas and those, of course, are the basis for our elections and for voting moving forward. So what then is the ideal population per trustee area? This is of course something we need to know because if we're supposed to equalize the population, we will want to know what the ideal or the perfect population for each trustee area would be. And the way to figure this out is you take the total population for the for the entire district area and then you would divide it by the number of trustee areas. And then that gets you the ideal population. And that is something that you can do with any jurisdiction that you may be watching for redistricting. So you just get the total population of the jurisdiction divided by the number of districts and voila, here is your ideal population. So the Napa Valley Unified School District's total population from the 2020 census is 118,347 persons. And these are not registered voters, not citizens, not people over 18. These are comprised of everybody who was enumerated by the census. And then the ideal population for the trustee areas is essentially just taking that total population, dividing it by the seven trustee areas. And that gets us to 16,000, roughly 16,907 persons per trustee area. So that is our ideal population. And in an ideal world, we would land there within reason. So then how equal is equal? We talked about reasonably equal populations. There are different standards, in fact, for different jurisdictions and for different, what we call plans. Congressional districts, for example, are held to stricter scrutiny and lower level districts have more flexibility. So for example, your border supervisor, your city council and your school district has a little bit more flexibility in meeting these equal population criteria, this equal population criterion. For trustee areas, we're looking for reasonable equality. So some deviation above or below the ideal population is allowed. And that's actually a really good thing because it helps us to meet the other criteria a little bit better. So generally, up to plus minus 5% is used in Federal Voting Rights Act compliance. And that is pretty much the rule of thumb that everyone sticks to for districts unless they are congressional districts. The ideal population, then of course, again, 16,907 persons. And plus minus 5% would get us to plus or minus 845 persons. So let's look at the current deviation by trustee area. We have area one, which is a little bit overpopulated, but marginally. It's plus 0.34%. Area two, also just very, very tiny little bit overpopulated at point two four percent. Area three is underpopulated by negative 4.81%. Area four is underpopulated by 2.4%. Area five is overpopulated by 5.82%. Area six, overpopulated by point eight nine percent. And area seven, marginally underpopulated at 0.09%. And I have a little map for you. Now basically shows the the various trustee areas and which ones are over and underpopulated. So so really talking about this plus minus standard, that plus minus 5% deviation, you can see that essentially here, the area number five, which is right here in the middle, is overpopulated and would definitely need to be brought down. And then this year is really it's a, it's definitely a little bit underpopulated at negative 4.81%. The other areas look pretty good. But again, as I mentioned earlier, the redistricting is an opportunity to look at your districts and at your trustee areas and we will await your direction and feedback to move forward and figure out how to come into compliance with the equal population criteria. So let's go to criterion two, which is the Federal Voting Rights Act. And in redistricting, we focus on section two of the Federal Voting Rights Act. And I will read to you what it says. It says, it prohibits the denial or abridgement of voting rights on the basis of race or language minority status. And the Federal Voting Rights Act defines language minority as Asian, Native American, Alaskan native or Spanish heritage. And it does not apply to other language groups. So you know, other like European language groups or whatever, they may be a language minority in the school district. That's very well possible, but the Federal Voting Rights Act would not be applicable to that, to those populations. What it does is it prohibits the practices that have the purpose or effect of discriminating on the basis of race or language minority status. So it's the purpose or effect. So either if you're doing it on purpose or it just has the effect of discriminating. So even if you're not doing it on purpose, if there is discrimination, then you know, you're liable basically under the Federal Voting Rights Act. So it applies nationwide to all jurisdictions that conduct elections. So not just to school districts, but everybody has to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. It's a very important federal law. And there are, of course, again jurisdictions up and down California and throughout the United States that are currently looking at their compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. In redistricting for the Federal Voting Rights Act, we talk about terminology, including vote dilution. So electoral systems, so our by-trustee area election system is an electoral system can limit the ability to elect a candidate of choice. This is also terminology that is generally used in the Voting Rights Act. The the ability to elect a candidate of choice can be limited by a protected class of voters in various ways. And one example is that an at-large election system, and this is generally what the California Voting Rights Act speaks to. And a at-large election system can make it impossible for even a large minority group to elect a candidate of choice when the majority votes against them. When we're in redistricting and we already have districts, then we are really on this next example, which is single-member trustee areas. This is what we have. We have like one member per trustee areas. They can be drawn in ways that minimize voters' ability to elect a candidate of choice also. And systems that limit that ability to elect in this way are set to dilute minority voting strength. So what then is a section two or majority minority district or majority minority trustee area? So there is a very important case called Thornburg versus Jingles that gave us criteria by which to assess whether a particular area rises to potentially have Voting Rights Act protections or considerations. And these criteria are the following. There has to be a protected minority group that must be large enough to constitute a majority in the district or the trustee areas. And that means that area has to be 50% or more citizen voting age population. The minority group must be geographically compact. The minority group must vote cohesively. So basically vote for half the same electoral wish. And there must be evidence of polarized voting against the minority group. So that basically means that the white majority is usually the white majority votes against the interests of the minority group. If those crongs of Jingles or the Jingles factors are met, then special consideration for a particular area may come into play. So having talked quite a bit about race and language minority status and the Voting Rights Act, now we're also talking, we also have to talk about race and redistricting in a different context. And that is that the Supreme Court has limited the role that race can play in redistricting. And if you're thinking that this is starting to sound a little complicated since we just talked all about race and ethnicity and now we're talking about how you have to limit race and ethnicity, then you would be corrected as a very complicated area. And one just has to be very cautious in this area. But doesn't mean that race and ethnicity are not important. And so the Supreme Court may have limited the role that race can play in redistricting. And race cannot be the predominant criterion when we're drawing lines. But that does not mean that we cannot take race and ethnicity into consideration. We should just not subjugate traditional redistricting principles. And if you recall the slide that we looked at earlier, where our redistricting criteria were listed and we're now, of course, going through them. And these are traditional redistricting principles. And these principles will be used together in this context. And that way, we're going to make sure that race is not going to be the predominant criterion in line drawing while also not ignoring it. So some traditional redistricting principles or criteria are compactness, contiguity and communities of interest. We'll talk about them a little bit more in a second. The appearance of the districts has been important in some court cases in the past where the judges have said, well, this just really looks funny. We need to look at this closer. And then basically they determined that race was a predominant criterion. So we will be keeping an eye on all of that. Criterion three in our process is contiguity and contiguity. And contiguity um basically means that a trustee area must be that all the parts of a trustee area must be adjacent to another part. In other words, it would be a trustee area in one which may travel from any one location to any other location without crossing another trustee area boundary. So um basically, the districts have to be in one piece, so not one piece over here in the north and then three districts in between or trustee areas in between, and then another uh pieces in the south. So that that just would be in violation of this particular criterion. Communities of interest always my favorite criterion in redistricting. Um, the concept of community of interest is as, of course, the name uh suggests. It's described as a geographic area comprised of residents that share similar interests. So um communities of interest are defined by those who are familiar with the community. So essentially, either people that live in the community, that work in the community, for example, that just know something about the community. Sometimes we, we get advocacy groups that know a particular area very well that are weighing in and defining communities of interest. And you may have heard that there is a big push throughout the state of California right now by the Citizens Redistricting Commission, the State Commission, to uh define communities of interest. So this is really criterion that has increased in uh importance quite a bit um throughout the state and then also nationally. And um also I know that there are quite a few uh redistrictings going on within the county of Napa. And they're also looking for communities of interest. I think especially right now, because everything is happening at the same time. It's important to remember that communities of interest are really specific to the jurisdiction that you're working with. So a community of interest for Napa Valley Unified may not be the same community of interest that you may be um talking to the State Commission about or to your county redistricting uh people. Um, because they may be very specific. They are usually very specific to the jurisdiction with which you are working. So we'll talk about this a little bit more um on the next slide. But one thing to keep in mind is that the law really does not limit the kinds of interests that can bind the community. So uh it's a very broad, broad definitions are possible. And uh your interests, the interests for a community of interest also have, don't have to be limited necessarily to the current situation. But they could also include common goals that communities may be uh working together on. So here are some just very general examples. For example, economic interests and we, we in California, we use these these two brackets usually to talk about communities of interest. So we talk about economic interests and social interests. Just to make it a little bit easier for people to kind of wrap their head around this. This can be a very um elusive concept when you're first getting started. But I think once you start thinking about it a little bit more, it actually makes perfect sense. So, for example, let's say you are in a community that um has common employment or common economic opportunities. So maybe a lack of economic opportunities. You may just say, this is my community of interest and this is how it is defined. We don't have a lot of economic opportunities here. The goals may be, we are all working on expanding opportunities. So maybe access to economic opportunities or so, or access to employment. And social interests, and this may be something that factors into our process, is, for example, you may be working on schools. You may be working on uh Napa Valley Unified School District schools. You uh may have a shared culture, uh shared language. There may be shared interests around transportation. And goals may be something as simple as improving recreational opportunities or maybe working with the school, you know, maybe working on school cleanups or safety, public safety, preserving historic resources. It's very broad. Communities of interest is very broad and again, very specific to every jurisdiction. Neighborhoods are often thought of as communities of interest also. So one thing to keep in mind is that when we're talking about communities of interest, the importance is that if you come and you say we are a community of interest, what you probably are saying is that you would like to stay together in a particular trustee area. And it is very important for us to know where communities of interest are. Because if we don't know where communities of interest are, then we may accidentally split you. And then you may not be in one trustee area. Because remember, our criteria, our first and foremost criterion really is equal population. So um you know, uh the, the district lines will be moving a little bit in this, in this process and maybe a little bit more. And um we're just at the starting point here and our discussion will be starting. And so we need to hear from everybody uh to make sure that we know where your communities are. So we don't accidentally split you if you would like to stay together. So then how would you document your community of interest? So how, how would you get that to us? Um, you can think about it in the following way. There are some questions that you may ask. You may want to talk to your community members um about, like, what bonds your community? Like, what defines your community of interest? What's your mission? What's your commonality? You could explain, for example, what's different outside of the boundaries of your community um as opposed to inside of your community. Where's your community located? So for this particular redistricting, we really need your community to be located within the district. So it needs to be within Napa Valley Unified. If it's outside of the district, then yes, you may of course be a community of interest, but it just does not factor into this particular process. Because we may not be responsible for it. So show us where your community is located by creating a map of the boundaries. There are various ways to do that. You could use the draw my C A community dot org um interface that is a um mapping interface that the state, the state of California is making available. And uh we will be providing um directions on how to use it and instruction on how to use it. And there are other mapping tools that can be used. And you can just take a piece of paper and just draw us a map of your community of interest. Please just write down the boundaries, label the boundaries, or you can just write down the boundaries and you don't even have to draw. If you're like me and you can't draw, which I can't, um I'm the first admitted. Then just write down the boundaries. My community of interest goes from this street to this street to that street to this street. And then just send it on over to us. The website has instructions. They're already there on how to use the state's community of interest tool to map communities of interest and then also submit them to Napa Valley Unified. So we're looking forward to hearing from all of you. We would love to get um your community of interest uh input by December ten, please, to be considered for the draft maps. So really quickly, criterion four, and again, these are not ranked. We're just ordering them a little bit, so it's easier to follow along. Uh, it's compactness. Compactness in California means don't bypass nearby areas of population in favor of more distant populations. So basically, just don't reach. And this is this thing about um strange, funny-looking districts. So if you've ever heard the term gerrymandering, this is usually what factors into gerrymandering. And when people see strange-looking districts, they always say, this is a gerrymander. And sometimes it is, and sometimes it may not be a gerrymander. So um it is assumed. So compactness is assumed to guard against all types of gerrymandering. That's what the courts have said. And they have also said that drastic departures from compactness are a signal that something may be amiss. So essentially, if it looks weird, then this may be a signal to take a closer look. Um, most common complaints um really about, about gerrymanders come from appearances. So for example, does something look funny? And the courts have also said that they use the eyeball approach. So in that, appearances matter. Other traditional redistricting criteria include topography, geography, integrity, and so forth. And these are geographic criteria. So they, they refer to the geography of the district overall and the individual districts. And really trustee area boundaries should make geographical and topo- topographic, topographical sense. I'm sorry, it's like topographical sense. Um, so essentially, you know, just draw, draw on boundaries that make some common sense. And it's always a good practice to follow natural and artificial boundaries. So by artificial boundaries, of course, we mean roads, for example. Uh, but then also natural features should be followed, and that is a really good thing and really good best practice. With that, we have reached our timeline overview. So everybody can take a look at this and uh can uh know when to get ready for another meeting with us. And we're looking forward to seeing everybody. So today, of course, is our kickoff. And then in not very long, um we will have a pre-draft map, public input hearing. And uh hopefully you will all participate and uh tell us what you think about the current uh trustee area lines. And please just again, always tell us about your community of interest. We will then move on to December nine. And that's meeting three, again, a pre-draft um map, public input meeting. Uh, December ten, as I mentioned earlier, is our deadline to submit community of interest testimony to be considered in the draft maps. And the first draft maps for the proposed trustee area maps will be published on the website on December thirteen. Then we go into twenty twenty-two. And we give you all a break over the holidays and um will then be regrouping January twenty for a fourth meeting where we will have public feedback on the first draft of the proposed trustee areas. And then January twenty-six, there will be revised final draft maps of the trustee areas published on the website. February third, there will be the fifth meeting, and that's the final hearing and a board vote. And then March one is the submission of the trustee area boundary maps to the Napa County Committee on School District Organization for their approval. So why should you participate? And I also, I always say this is kind of a cheat sheet. If you want to talk to your neighbors or your community members into, into participating and you need some good talking points, um really, we just need to know about your community of interest, please. And you should participate because you want to give your community a voice and make sure it has equal access to the political process. You'd like, you should participate to encourage citizens to register and vote and remain politically engaged and to help shape a redistricting plan that provides communities in your community a meaningful opportunity to elect candidates who represent your interests, their interests on uh issues that are important to their lives. And uh here's a slide that lets you know how to get involved. So to participate in the process, please testify again. Submit written testimonies, send supporting information to NVUSD. And please provide information about your community of interest or other topic the board needs to know about as soon as possible. You can submit information at a hearing by mail or drop it off at Napa Valley Unified School District, twenty-four twenty-five Jefferson Street, room one two four in Napa, California, nine four five five eight. Via email, we have a redistricting twenty twenty-one at nvusd.org email address. And you can get information online at our website, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash W W W dot nvusd.org forward slash redistricting. And this is your one-stop shop to get all of the information that we've just discussed and more. So please keep an eye on it. And thank you so very much for participating. With that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And if you have any questions, I am here. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, we will start with some board questions. Did you have a?
I have, I have two. Uh, the first is, it looks like we could achieve the appropriate balance um in uh our maps and areas by just shifting between one and five percent from area five to area three. And that would sort of solve all of our imbalance issues. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. And then two, um I just wanted to encourage people to utilize uh the tools provided by Q two. We did this roughly a year ago. And they have excellent mapping tools that you should take advantage of. So I really encourage you to visit um the website that was just mentioned because these tools are, are really good tools. I was, I was quite impressed with them um in, in sort of opposition to other groups who do this work. They don't have nearly the quality of mapping tools that uh, that this firm is able to provide for us. So I, I just wanted to really encourage people in the community to, to check out the website.
And that is just for the record, nvusd.org backslash or redistricting twenty twenty-one. You mean our webpage? Correct, right? Trustee Garcia, that's what you're referring to, yeah. And just to be distinct, because uh we did redo redistricting not that long ago, prior to the twenty twenty census data being provided. So the way we're delineating that is calling it redistricting twenty twenty-one.
Other questions or clarification? Yep, trustee Dooley.
Thank you. Um, you had mentioned that the um with the concept of community of interest, that they could be different uh among the different jurisdictions. I know that um the county, both the County Office of Education and the uh the county and, I mean, all the, the jurisdictions are redistricting right now. And, and I know there are different timelines, but in what ways would a community of interest uh for say, like the county district areas uh differ from a community of interest when we're analyzing our maps?
Thank you so much for that question. Um, it, it has to do with um with geography and also with the kind of topics that the County Board of Supervisors, for example, is responsible for as opposed to the kinds of topics and issues that you're responsible for. So um let me take a slightly different um, a pretty good example, I think. Um, since a state is collecting communities of interest right now, there are communities of interest that are being um submitted that um are comprised of multiple counties together, for example. And um so they're obviously much larger. And um you know, your County Board of Supervisors is not responsible for uh Napa Valley Unified School District uh topics about, you know, uh how the schools are being run about your, your particular, um your student population. They may be interested in it, but these are just different issue areas. So um people probably don't go to Napa Valley Unify um to talk about, you know, filling potholes or, or things like that. So essentially, if you have a, a pothole community of interest, then they may be going to the city council. And that may be their particular community of interest for that topic. And then um for you, it may be more related to education. And I, I hope, I hope that was clear. Uh, if not, please, please just uh prompt me and I'll try.
That was good. I think, you know, my, my thought is that I, you know, since they are also doing some work. If there's a, a, a community of interest that, that is identified through a different redistricting process, is there a way that we cross-reference that or so that, you know, we're, if it doesn't come to our attention through this process that, you know, we're not inadvertently splitting a community of interest? I mean, I, I, I get the, the, there's distinct differences and those interests may, may not align. But if it is something like a neighborhood that has um similar interests that may um it, it may make sense in both jurisdictions that they be a, a community of interest that we identify. Um, are we limited to only those communities that identify themselves through our process? Or are we cross-referencing with some other uh regional or local jurisdictions?
Um, yeah, thank you again for, for that question. Um, uh, so most generally, so the work that I've done throughout California, this, this has come up a bit and we've looked into that. And there's generally quite a bit of pushback on, on using communities of interest because a-again, sometimes communities just really uh define themselves differently. With neighborhoods, it's a little different. Um, neighborhoods usually don't change between the different jurisdictions. And I think we still have quite a bit of community of interest and also neighborhood testimony from the process that we just went through not too long ago. Um, so perhaps if you wish, we So perhaps, if you wish, we could go back to that and, you know, let people know that that information is still available, and that may be relevant to this particular process a little bit more than perhaps communities of interest that were submitted to perhaps the county. Again, it's different jurisdictional boundaries and just for a different, you know, purpose. But of course, we're happy to look into this for you if you wish.
Thank you.
It, I think it's an attract, it's an attractive idea, you know, and you work down at the county, and you probably see things differently than than a lot of us do, but the county has more, a lot more people than we have, and they only have five districts for all those people, and I think that it's very, very easy to, I mean, one of, one of the districts has eighty-five percent of all the wineries. And then and then another one, you know, has has a very very middle-class, you know, lower-density neighborhood combined with, you know, high-density neighborhood, which is mine. And so I I don't know, I just don't know that there's going, that there would be a lot of cross-referencing, but it would be interesting to look at what they come up with. You know, who knows?
That was a great question, trustee Julie, because as I explore a bit more of the website, the county, and I believe this is from the election office, put together a consolidated restricting calendar, because you may think that you are providing input at the county level, thinking, oh, that must include maybe my school district and the city and the Office of Educ, like, I just have to input once. And it's actually, you, is it multiple? Or is there a way to consolidate that? Because it civic engagement is hard, and this is reaching a level of almost time-consuming sophisticated, like, just, i- it's, it's daunting. So I really appreciate that question, because is there a way to capture other information? And I know I'm looking at the calendar here, and it's color-coded and everything, and the county of Napa, City of Napa, Napa Valley College, Napa County Office of Education, and our district is going through this process. So it is, it is a lot to follow, so.
And on that calendar, we are included on that calendar. We have been working with them, but it is also recognized that we are the only one that's actually engaging in our own single process. But they did include our dates on that calendar.
And I appreciate, you know, having done this, this district having done this so recently, it makes total sense to to leverage that. And, you know, I think Ms. McDonald for mentioning that the, that there's really recent historical data that we have from the districting process. And and I think, you know, my question wasn't necessarily to highlight a deficiency in a process. I think it was more to, you know, raise the awareness that we are collecting this data through our process, and our process is different from that of the other jurisdictions, so.
Yeah, it's deja vu for me, I think. It's like we were just here. So, yeah, it, for your comment, David, trustee Garcia, there's some tweaking to do, and it seems like we could, there's, there's something there. So looking forward to the public comment on this as well, and the hearings we will have. Any other questions or clarification? Mr. Michael, Michael said would like to now invite our public who would like to comment on this item.
Yes, we do have a public comment. First up is Amy Martenson. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions and maybe one comment. The first question I had was, I listened to the presentation by Paul Mitchell, who's the demographer for the other jurisdictions in Napa County, and when he went over the traditional mapping principles, he actually said that they are ranked in order of priority. So I'm just wondering, is that something that demographers disagree with in terms of their interpretation of the law? Because he did rank them and said that that some were higher priority than others. So that's one question. The other question is, is it up to you, the demographer, to flag if there is a majority-minority district and or we have to, we have to figure that out on our own? And I'm wondering if you've already looked at the data to determine if there is one that could be created. And then my last question is, does the the district have a map of the enrollment areas? Because that seems like that might be, you know, communities of interest around enrollment areas. So those are my three questions. And that's it. Actually, I'd like to make one comment. Yeah, I really like the idea of you guys going back and looking at the the past comments, because I'm a little concerned about talking about just moving one boundary to to get that equal population, because in, based on what happened last time, for example, in American Canyon, there was almost every resident that spoke from American Canyon wanted to be kept together. And instead, the city was split, and each was put with a portion of Napa. So I do think that that needs to be looked at again. And I hope that the, the board doesn't decide just to move a boundary to adjust for equal population. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Roseanne Meyer. Go ahead, please.
I, I didn't know, I, I didn't know I raised my hand. I guess that I'm concerned about the anti-mandate date protests that have been going on near the schools. There was one just recently.
Ms. Meyer? This item is regarding redistricting and speaking on.
I thought so. I don't know how you called me.
You raised your hand, you may raise your hand down, and then raise your hand when the next item comes up, which it may be item L one A, which are you referring to? Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, next feature speaker is Rachel Clark. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I just would like to say, if maybe in the future, when it comes to redistricting, that we just have one evening dedicated for that. I believe that this evening, when we have such large items on the agenda, that we should be mindful of that, so we can have everybody be able to participate on these items of concern in the community. Thank you.
Next speaker.
There is no further public comment for this item.
I believe we're going to be talking about this item on November fourth.
Yes, it won't be the sole item.
But there will only, it's a special meeting, and we'll only be talking about two subjects.
There, there will be a lighter agenda. It's a special meeting, and we do have one additional one that's a special meeting dedicated solely to redistricting. That is correct, trustee Y.
Yeah, I mean, this is a first of a series of meetings, and we have to conduct, yeah, business, and there are days where it's going to be busy. And we have to follow the rules here with with this area. Okay, no further comment, Mr. Michaels. Is that what I?
Yes, there's no further comment.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we are now moving on to item J two A. This is an expenditure plan presentation. We will have Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings.
Yes, good evening again. I'm excited to share with you our plan for allocating S R three funds. Can you bring up the slides, Mr. Michaels? Thank you so much. And then can you go to the next slide? For this presentation, I will be, I will share with you what S R is. I'll review the alignment with our other strategic plans and how we engage with our stakeholders regarding the plan. I will also describe how the funds are divided into two spending categories and the strategies used to provide continuous and safe in-person learning and addressing lost instructional time. Next slide, please. The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, otherwise known as CARES, provides funding to school districts through the elementary and secondary emergency relief, which is where S R three comes from. These federal funds are specifically to address the impact of running elementary and secondary schools during a pandemic. NVSD has received, received state and federal funds over the past year. However, these S R three funds have the longest lifespan of the one-time funds. We will have until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four to expend at these funds. As a result, NVUSD is leveraging these funds to ensure that we are able to provide programming and cover the cost of running schools during a pandemic over three years. And this is in coordination with our other funds that have been received through through COVID relief. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in the previous slide, we are utilizing these funds over three years to support district operations and programming. We've relied on NVUSD's strategic plan and previously presented and approved L cap and expanded learning opportunities grant to determine how to allocate S R three funds. Next slide, please. In order to determine how to allocate funds, we relied on stakeholder feedback from the Spring Local Control and Accountability Plan Stakeholder Sessions. Feedback, feedback was also gathered during the superintendent's parent advisory council, the superintendent's teacher advisory council, NVUSD's District English Learner Advisory Council, also known as D LAC, and conversations with our employee bargaining units of NAPS, N V A, and C S C A. Next slide, please. The allocation that NVSD received is divided into two categories. The first category is focused on supporting continuous and safe in-person learning. There was a recognition that funds were needed specifically to account for the additional cost of running schools during a pandemic. The second category is focused on addressing lost instructional time with a minimum of twenty percent of these S R funds being used for that purpose. Next slide, please. The funds allocated to assist the district in providing safe, continuous in-person learning over the next few years are indicated on this particular slide. You can see the areas that the funding has been allocated. We have four point one million to, that is to go to certificate and classify non-management personnel. Eight hundred fifty thousand to certificate and classify management personnel, personnel that has been added to help us through this time, whether it's a student health and wellness coordinator or our COVID, COVID czar, as we like to call her, that works in human resources. We've had to also have additional contracted services to help pay for additional expenses of materials that we've used during this time and some of the indirect costs that are associated with it. Next slide, please. Here's an example of some of the things that we've spent, or not spent, but that is allocated for this particular category of funds in terms of that continuous and safe in-person learning. And here are some examples of the services. I mentioned before, we've had to increase our student health service personnel, whether it's through our health services assistance or helping with COVID tracking and tracing. We've also had to have additional hours for nurses who have worked tirelessly to make sure that they are on any of the positive COVID cases. There's also been increased costs associated with COVID nineteen, whether it's increased, like, unemployment insurance, the cost for personal protective equipment or additional maintenance and operations staffing that's needed to keep our schools clean. Next slide, please. To address lost instructional time, the following funds have been allocated in these indicated categories. You'll see the one point eight million in personnel, non-managements. That's our instructional staff, as well as the indirect costs, it's just the the cost that to manage the money that is being received by the, by the school district and the tools that we've had to bring in to support some of the lost instructional time, whether it's some of our academic programs that we've brought in. But those are all part of the plan for the fund, this funding to be spent over the next three years. Next slide, please. And as you can see on this slide, and I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that S R three allows us to pay for and over three years and maintain the programs that we want to really support students to address the lost instructional time. It allows us to keep intervention teachers for at least two years, if not three, as well as the increased hours for our library and media specialist, and then continued as we work to start up our learning hubs at our elementary, middle, and high schools to provide peer professionals extra hours to provide tier-two and tier-three support. And you, I think earlier, trustee mentioned about the STAR Renaissance assessment. So that's one of the tools we use to identify and track and support the unfinished learning and part of the funding in this S R three plan is to support that work. And with that, that concludes my report, my presentation. And the last slide is just any questions that anyone might have.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Chu.
So you mentioned that you're going to use STAR assessments and other assessments to track and identify any unfinished learning. Will you be using any of those data to kind of help you allocate where resources go in terms of school sites, or how do you prioritize at that level? Maybe you're not prioritizing at that level, but just have an idea where that data, what what we can use that data for, for more of a data-driven decision-making, I guess.
Yes, and for this particular funding source, we have not done that with this funding source, but with the previous funds that have been received, that's exactly what we did. We looked at the numbers of English learners at a particular site. We also looked at the strengths and difficulty questionnaire in terms of the student health and wellness and using that as a way of determining how much funding the site received. We looked at the the STAR data from last year to determine which sites needed more intervention time at the elementary level. So we do use that data to determine, you know, how we're allocating resources. Sometimes it's just a straight, like, each site got additional funding for visual and performing arts and for STEM programming, and that was just based on a per pupil count and a dollar amount per pupil for funding per site. So it just depends on the funding source, but for this funding, in particular, we will be looking at the STAR assessment data in terms of allocating resources to school sites.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I do actually have a question, too. In the plan, you state that this is sort of a three-year plan that we're going to do over a period of time. My thought then is that at the end of the first year, that we should make a determination as to whether our, our interventions are succeeding or not, and then reassess whether we should change those interventions or continue with what we have been doing.
Yes, we will be doing that on the micro and macro level. So at the site level, looking at whether the interventions that students are being given are making a difference. So we'll be able to track that on a, you know, as we go through the MTSS process. And then on a macro level, we look at the district-wide to see if how we're allocating resources and and how we're implementing interventions impact student outcomes.
Go ahead, trustee Riser.
I just had one comment, which is, I really appreciate the reframing of lost instructional time instead of learning loss, because learning loss sounds like the kids knew it, and then something happened, and they lost it all. And so I just, it's a minor thing, but messaging and and words matter, and I just think it's a more accurate way to frame it, that we lost the instructional time, and now we're trying to recover the learning because of that. So it's a minor thing, but I appreciate it.
Thanks for identifying that, trustee Riser. I actually, and that's actually the the term that the the S R three plan is, you know, says lost instructional time. I actually prefer that the term unfinished learning, because it's, it's many students just, that's what happened. They have unfinished learning from the previous grade level, and that's what we're trying to address this year.
Agree. I like unfinished learning also.
Seeing that there's no more questions at this time, I will ask Mr. Michaels to see if there's any public comment on this item.
We do have a public comment. Norma Ortiz.
Norma Ortiz, go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just for the record and public comment, I tried to speak, I followed protocol and it's not the first time I didn't get the opportunity to speak. Moving to the to comments in this agenda item, I would like to know in terms of high need students, how the how the tutoring or interventions or supports are going to be in place based on the fact that at at most of the sites at times, it's been difficult to fill certain positions in terms of teachers or subs. I I do want to mention that there has been a lot of learning loss, so how is that going to be handled? And it would be nice to see more specific data with more details. So you could share in these types of meetings so parents could have more information to contribute to these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
There is no further public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. We now go on to our item K of our agenda. We did amend and move item K four A, so we will invite our presenters for the public hearing and approval of name for new middle school language academy.
We do have a public hearing and an action item, but I am going to request that staff present first. Go ahead, Ms. Assistant Superintendent Andrea Jennings, I believe you'll kick us off.
Yes, I will. Good evening again. The opportunity and honor of naming a school does not come around very often. I am thrilled to have had this opportunity to participate in this process. I would like to kick off this presentation by introducing Monica Ready, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services for Secondary. Director Ready was critical, was the critical lead in the citizen advisory committee process. And with that, I will pass the mic to her.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. Could you please share the presentation? Thank you, Mr. Michaels, and could you move to the next slide, please? Good evening, President Gonzalez-Maraes, Board of Trustees and Student Board Member. On August 19th, 2021, the Board of Education took action establishing the Citizens Advisory Committee. The committee has since met four times beginning August 31st, culminating on Tuesday, October 12th. Tonight, October 14th is an exciting night, as mentioned previously, in the history of NVSD, as we present the name recommendation for the New Middle School Language Academy, which will serve to strengthen the K-12 dual-language immersion pathway with and for our students, staff and community. Next slide, please. Tonight, you'll hear from our committee members who will share out their information regarding the process that was used for this for this committee. And with that, this this committee was established in line with our board policy 1220. The Citizens Advisory Committee reflects the diversity of the community. There is breadth and experience with both dual-language immersion and the schools within our community as well as our larger community. They also represent a diversity of viewpoints, including school staff, parents and community members. The goal of the committee was to represent the interest and considerations of the community in recommending a name for the New Middle School Language Academy. I want to take a moment to thank Chairperson Brian Teff, who could not be here tonight, Vice Chairperson Lori Piambo, who you will hear from later on, and members of the Citizens Advisory Committee and the community who engaged in this process, especially the students of Napa Valley Language Academy and Puba Vista, who shared their drawings and ideas for the future of the New Middle School Language Academy. You'll now hear from the current MBLA principal and the future principal of the New Middle School Language Academy, Principal Alejandro Urebe. Next slide, please.
Yes, good evening. So I'm going to go over the guiding principles that we used during the process. And so one of the grounding resources that we used in our conversations and ultimate recommendation of the name that you're going to hear later today was board policy 7310. And this policy speaks specifically on naming a campus. In addition, we use the mission and vision for the New Middle School Language Academy, which was developed over the summer specifically towards the middle of July, beginning of August. And this was co-developed by educators, a group of educators, parents and students. And this also served as an anchor to guide our conversations and ultimately a name recommendation. And now I'm going to toss it over to our, to Lori Piambo, who's going to talk to you a little bit more about the process that we engaged in to advance our name recommendation for tonight. Vice Chairman, Mrs. Piambo.
Hi, thank you, Principal Uribe. I'm Lori Piambo and I'm the vice chair. And our citizen advisory committee met a total of four times. Our committee is made up of nine community, community members. So on August 31st, the committee had overview of what, you know, what our task was and the Brown Act training. We had our election of Chairperson Brian and Vice Chair myself. We established our guiding principles, which Principal Uribe reviewed. Then on September 12th, we had the development of interests and considerations and presentation of the guiding principles. We had a generation, a generation of possible names and the creating of a survey for community and student input. And on, sorry, on September 28th, we reviewed the geography and the history of the school site and the surrounding neighborhood and areas and a presentation and review of the student and community input. And interestingly, the top three ratings for what the community wanted for the naming of the school, what it should entail, were the same for English and Spanish speakers, and they were reflect the importance of bilingualism and bilinguality, emphasizes global citizenship, inclusive of schools merging into one community. So we kept that in mind, you know, as we came up with names and that kind of thing. So we we narrowed the names and recommendations that we had put out there and we whittled them down to a smaller, just more of a recommendation list that we had to think about as we went into the last meeting. And for October 12th, we started with the recommended list of names. And after extensive conversations and review, our community, our committee unanimously agreed on the name for the school. And so with that, I would like to introduce committee member Franklin, Franklin Hernandez, who's also a wonderful sixth grade teacher at MBLA.
Thank you, Lori. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Franklin Hernandez. I'm a sixth grade teacher at the Napa Valley Language Academy. And I was also a member of the Community Advisory Committee. And tonight, I'm really honored to introduce the video of my student Ephraim Velazquez, who brought his vision and idea of unity to the to the task that the students were asked to do when he recommended this school name. He really helped me really see the power of the name Unidos as it relates to bringing together new communities under a new vision and mission. I think that the simplicity and power of the name can help write a new chapter in the NVSD history. If we can play the video, that would be great.
Mr. Michaels, we can't hear anything in the boardroom.
We can't hear the video as well, Ms. Frankels.
Sorry, having a bit of technical difficulties here, one second.
No worries, thank you.
It may be a shared screen setting that you have to click that will allow the audio to come through. I've had this problem before on Zoom.
We just really wanted to build the anticipation.
I am excited to share the.
Oh, there it is.
Are you ready? Unidos Middle School, or you have met. Well, you were my original idea because several schools were closing. And since we need those means coming together, I saw it would be a good name. It will be a good name, no matter our backgrounds and color of our skin. Thank you.
Next slide, please, Mr. Michaels. And thank you for your patience. I think it was worth the wait. So at that time, at this time, we'll take a discussion and questions.
Well, I like what, one moment, we're going to first open up the public hearing and then we, and then go to board discussion and action.
Before we get there, though, I'm going to move that we extend the meeting till 1:00 AM.
We have a first to extend our meeting to second. A second by trustee Riser, student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed or abstained? Great, thank you. I get to use the gavel for the first time for this. We are going to now open our public hearing for the name, for the approval of the name of the New Middle School Language Academy. Mr. Michaels, if we could cue the first speaker, if there's questions or comments.
We have no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. I am now closing the public hearing. And now we will go with questions. You were, I think, starting trustee water.
We're living in very complicated times and Mr. Hernandez sold me on simplicity. And I I did sit in at the at the meeting. I don't think anybody saw me and I didn't say anything, but you know, I was listening to the discussion and it was going, they had, they had some very good, they had a list of great names, but I do like this one. I like, I think it sends a positive message of, you know, union, united. Out of many, one, you know, we're a community. And this is what, this is what we want to foster with our middle school and bringing people together. And I think it's, I think it's great. Good job, you know, good job. And you have a very convincing advocate there, your student. I would tell them thank you.
Well, I'll let him know.
I to enjoy the simplicity that is part of this name and it has an elegance to it, I would say. In just having the the single word accompanied by middle school. So I too was following the discussions and, you know, saw how we arrived at this. And I think, I think the discussions really bore how nicely this encapsulates what this school will be about.
I loved listening to the conversation. It was so organic, the way this name arose. I love so much that it was a student suggestion. I just think, you know, in our hope and desire to continue to center and amplify student voices, that just is is symbolic and wonderful to me. And I love that for our dual language academy, the name of the school has two languages in it. I think that that is also really symbolic and beautiful. And I just want to thank all the community members for their commitment and their service to us in arriving at this beautiful concluding decision. I love it.
I I really appreciated observing the process as well. I think the the beginning, the process with looking at what the interests and considerations were, the guiding principles that led to to this, you can really see the through line from from that discussion to the the conclusion in this recommendation. And it's, you know, as my fellow trustees have said, it's a, it's an elegant, does an elegant name, it's a simple name, it's, it is meaningful. It reflects the meaning, you know, kind of the coming together of elementary schools into a broader community, which every middle schooler experiences. And, you know, this is a good aspirational name. You know, we can look at the the signs on the campus when they're, when they're put up and it'll be, you know, something to aspire to when you come to school every day, so.
So I also really like the bilingualism of this name. I do want to give a shout out to all the kids who submitted their ideas and their artwork to the principals. And I I saw some of the work that was shown. I know that's not all because there were hundreds that were were shown. So I love the the student engagement piece of of this whole process. So thank you, guys.
Super excited. Very, very excited that we have reached this point. And I don't know, just, I think we should do the, our first needles as a board. Unmute our mics and in the count of three, say that. But first, I think we need to take an action. And then we'll do that. I'm just that excited. I think we can do the first official cheer, but after we've done our recommended motion, seeing that if there's no further comment, that's what we have in front of us.
Move to approve.
I'll second. A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Water. Student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? No, all right, unmute your mic. The count of one, two, three, we're going to say Unidos. One, two, three. Unidos. Congratulations. Muchas gracias, thank you so much.
Can I just squeeze a muchas gracias in there? I just know the amount of work that has poured into this. I, you know, I've observed it closely since the summer. I want to just again, thank you Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings for your division, having the vision around this work. I want to thank Director Monica Ready, who has again been the lead and just poured her heart and soul into leading this process. And I especially want to just recognize what I think some of the trustees said is that I think as a former middle school and high school principal, I think I've said it before, is is very dedicated to centering student voice and co-construction, co-production with kids and young people, which I think is really, really powerful. So if you have time, trustees here in the Ed Center, she went as far as to create a display case. And so some of the artwork and and feedback and comments from the students are actually here displayed in the Ed Center. And then thank you, Principal Alejandro Uribe, who is working her, just working hard because she's still running MBLA, our flagship K six, while doing the development work for this middle school where the kiddos from that school, along with PV and Harvest.
Along with PV and Harvest and potentially some of the students currently enrolled at River will be attending next year. So thank you for all your double, triple, quadruple duty these days. And then Vice Chair Piambo, Committee Member Franklin Hernandez, Brian Teef is not here. He did an extraordinary job. Of running the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I just, again, I want to thank the two of you for being present here tonight and representing. The, the spirit of co-creation and co-production that was so present in that committee. So thank you for being representatives of the community. And contributing to something that's going to have a long lasting effect here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. It means a lot. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mercedes, and have a good night. Yeah, go to bed. Yeah. We tried to push us forward in the agenda as possible. Okay, we are now back to items in, in order here with K1A Resolution. Twenty-two dash zero five trustee area redistricting based on 2020 census data.
So moved.
Second. A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Dooley. I will ask if we have public comment on this item.
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Vera, you could, could conduct roll call, please.
Yes, student board member?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Marins?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Next item is K2A. This is our AB 1200 slash 2756 for CSEA.
So moved.
First by trustee Grass, a second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is item K3A, New York University Clinical Training Agreement.
So moved.
I'll second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Next item is K3B, Local Assignment Options for Teacher Assignments for 2122.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. First by trustee Grass, a second by trustee Chu. Do I have any speakers on this item?
There is no public. Comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K3C. Approval of NBUSD slash CSEA MOU with formula salary increase for fiscal year 2122.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? That was K3C. Yeah. Okay, we are now on to item K4B. This is the public hearing in adoption of Resolution 22 dash zero three certifying compliance of Education Code Section. Six zero one one nine and Education Code Section six zero four two two. And it opened public hearing. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There's no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. I will close our public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Vera, you could conduct roll call, please.
Yes, student board member?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Marins?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Item K4C, this is the ESSR expenditure plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. K4D, Addendum to the Agreement between Inspire Consulting and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K4E, Agreement between Karuna Consulting, LC and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K4F, Agreement between PMH Laboratories and Napa Valley Unified School District for COVID-19 Testing Services.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
We do have a public. Comment. Amy Martinson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just have some questions and concerns. So first, I'm wondering why we're entering into a contract for real time PCR testing when. The CDC will be retiring PCR testing as of December 31st. So I'm just curious about that, why we would be using a test that the CDC already is planning on to, on retiring. I also, I emailed the lab and I had some questions. I never got any responses to any of my questions. I was wondering how many cycles they're running the PCR tests. Because experts say that running them at 17 cycles, you get 100% accuracy. Anything over that, you start getting false positives. And even Fauci said that anything over 35 cycles. The chances of getting an accurate test are quote miniscule, unquote. However, the last lab was running the PCR tests at 40 cycles that we have been using. So I had a question about that. I also, and one of my biggest concerns is the swabs. So I also asked the lab if they would be using swabs that were natural fibers or synthetic fibers. Because the fibers do. Some of the fibers are left behind, whether it's in your nose, your mouth, and are absorbed by the body. And also how they're sterilizing the swabs, because usually these swabs are sterilized with ethylene oxide, which, which is a known carcinogen. They don't have to be sterilized with ethylene oxide. They could be using irradiation to sterilize them, but most of these swabs, including the ones that have been used all this year. With the district are sterilized with ethylene oxide, a known carcinogen. And so I had a question about that. And I'm wondering if you've looked into these kinds of issues with the test before you entered into the contract or before you choose to enter into the contract. And if you are going to have a lab that, that has swabs that are sterilized with ethylene oxide, I feel that should be disclosed. To staff and students before they use the swab. And then lastly, I'm wondering if the district ever looked into a test called saliva direct. I've mentioned it to some, some administrators at the district level. It was developed by Yale. It was. It's a test that's completely non-invasive. There are no swabs involved. You don't have to stick a swab in your nose or your mouth. You just dribble into a funnel and that sent off. It's supposed to be very inexpensive. And in fact. Yale developed it specifically, you know, to be inexpensive and non-invasive. And they have a mission, a public mission of providing at low cost to K through 12 schools. So I'm wondering if that was looked into as well, since there's so much concern about the swabs. And again, if they are going to use swabs, it definitely not excited to be disclosed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We had a first and a second. Any. Discussion? Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Okay, thank you. Item K4G. Agreement between Strategic Consultation for Schools, LC and Napa Valley Unified School District.
Move to approve, but I'd like a little discussion before vote.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Oh, I had trustee, trustee Gracia.
Yes. So I just wanted to highlight how important it is to partner with this group as they bring a. Wealth of knowledge, experience, and expertise that will benefit us in the process of implementing the FICMAT recommendations. Some of the people from this group were even part of the initial FICMAT study back in 2016. And therefore have direct experience with our district. This group will bring strategic knowledge that will help us to level up our sped department with the development of superior and efficient programs for our students. I look forward to seeing the results of their work.
Thank you, trustee Gracia.
And I too.
I was gonna say, I seconded the motion. I second those comments. It's important that we have the, the support to address a, you know. Wide variety of topics raised by the FICMAT report, and this is a great step toward that.
Thank you. You had a first and a second. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Just for the record, student board rep?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're now into item K5A. This is SBC number request for agreement with Interactive Resources Architect and Engineers for the Napa. High School Gym HVAC Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K5B, this is request of contract to Atlas P Construction for the Vintage High School Tennis Courts Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Water. Do I have public comment?
No public. Comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K5C, this is request for geotechnical testing services for the Vintage High School Tennis Courts Replacement Project with Miller Pacific.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public. Comment for this item.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Next item is K5D, Request for Contract with M&amp;M Inspection for the Vintage High School Tennis Courts Replacement. Project.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Grass, a second by trustee Chu. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K5E, this is a request for consultant services contract for the Vintage High School Tennis Courts Replacement Project. With Stone Water Specialist.
So moved.
Second.
First and second. First by trustee Grass, a second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Makes me want to visit those tennis courts. Okay, we are now moving into informational items. We are a few minutes shy from us taking a break. I think before we go into informational items. We will take our break and then go into that. So we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you. We are, um, now on to item L one A. This is the COVID-19 Public Health State Mandates and Guidelines for California TK-12 Public Schools. And before, um, and this is an informational item. These are items under this section do not required board action, so it's just informational. So anything from the board in terms of questions about this? If not, we will, um, then open for public comment, but before we do so, I know that this is an item that, uh, might be a high-interest topic, so I would like to know how many participants we have uh, wanting to provide a public comment. So if you are, um, going to speak on this item, if you could please raise your hand. And I will ask, um, Dr. Messetti, if she could help me take a poll.
Yeah, give me one moment, uh, President Gonzalez.
Yep.
Again, please raise your hand if you plan on speaking on this item. We have nineteen speakers.
Sorry, thank you, Nikki. My, my was off. Thank you, Dr. Messetti. Um, there are nineteen speakers. Um, I am, um, gonna also take a consensus from the board here, but uh, that we can time limit on public comment. Uh, individual speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes, so we can do that. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. And the president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask for additional persons to speak only if they have something new to add, seeing that we have twenty, and this is part of our Board Bylaw ninety-three twenty-three. Um, I would like to enact that. I think, um, with the twenty speakers that we have, we can put a one-minute time limit. And, um,
President Gonzalez, some have, um, low in their hands, so we now have seventeen. So for the record, we're gonna take seventeen. Uh, now we're back to eighteen, nineteen. So keep your hands up, please. So we're back to nineteen. If you want to enact the bylaw, you can have, um, a, a first speaker speak two minutes and, uh, give the rest, um, to, to split the twenty minutes. You can have the first speaker speak two minutes and then have the rest of them have a minute.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll hit the twenty minutes dedicated to this item.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Everybody?
All right, sounds good.
So, uh, Mr. Michaels, two minutes for the first speaker, and then we'll proceed one minute with each, so get the timer ready, please.
We are ready to go.
Great, thank you, Mr. Michaels. If you could, um, have the first speaker, um, have their mic unmuted.
Uh, yes, first speaker is Kevin, uh, W. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, good afternoon. This is Kevin. Uh, I am, uh, recommending against, I know you're not taking action, uh, against, uh, mandating these vaccines in the schools. Uh, Dr. Robert Malone, the creator of mRNA Technology. So he's the actual doctor who created mRNA Technology, which is used in the vaccines. Recently said that children should not be vaccinated for the moment. One of, uh, his concerns is that the government is not being transparent with us. And I, that's Dr. Malone, is saying that he's of the opinion that people have the right to decide whether to accept, except vaccines or not, especially since these are experimental vaccines. This is a fundamental right having to do with clinical research ethics. So even the guy who's, who created these vaccines is, uh, against us giving the children right now because the, he says, the scientific rigor has not been given to this in the way that it normally would. I'm summarizing that a little bit because we've got such a short time. Also, looking at twenty-one U.S. Code, Section three-six-zero, BBB-dash-three specifically states, um, and this is speaking about, um, the emergency use authorization that, uh, individuals on whom the product is administered are required to be informed of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. Uh, and that's, uh, U.S. Code, uh, twenty-one U.S. Code specifically about, uh, EA, EAU, uh, or emergency use authorization. The, and, um, FDA says very clearly that the, um, the Pfizer vaccine currently is under emergency use authorization. And e, the drug that is, uh, being, that has FDA authorization, Combernati, is, uh, only authorized for children, people sixteen years and older. And it could, but it continues to be available under the emergency use authorization under the old name, so none of the drug supplies in the U.S. right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin, for your comment. Next.
Next speaker is Sheri Debo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to say, as a parent with, um, two boys at Vintage High School, I would also like to recommend that you do not go forward with vaccine mandates. It is not only against the Nuremberg Codes that say that people cannot have medical procedures done against their will. As well, it is not FDA-approved, and even once it becomes FDA-approved, you cannot do this. It is unlawful to try to force someone to take of any kind of medical procedure against their will. Um, the fact that there are kids are still in masks is also ridiculous, since that has been proven to not stop the spread of anything having to do with COVID. It might stop a few spittles of bacteria, but that is it. It does not stop the spread of COVID. So end all of this.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Uh, next speaker is, uh, Jeanette. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, shame on all of you for giving us each a minute. It's, it's despicable. Um, for students in grade seven, the last normal school year they had was fourth grade. Students in sixth grade was third grade. Students in fifth grade was second grade. Fourth grade was first grade. Kids in second and first in kindergarten have never had a normal school year. What are we doing to our children? You hear about all the violence that's happening in the high schools. What are we doing to our children? We need to bring them back to normal. So many other counties are living in normal pre-COVID, without masks, without mandates, and they're thriving. We need to reconsider what we're doing to our children because it is detrimental and it's going to have a lasting effects forever. And we need to really reconsider what we're doing. Please, please, end all the mandates. Please give us more time. Please listen.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Uh, yes, the next speaker is Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Hello? I disagree with the implementation of this mandate in our school district. I have a seventh grader. Um, one of the reasons is because it has not been fully enforced at the federal level and can be easily challenged and remains also discretionary for religious and personal beliefs and other. Parents should not have, should have, parents should have the decision whether to vaccinate their children or not as minors, not the district.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Roseanne Meyer. Go ahead, please.
Ms. Meyer, go ahead. I don't hear anything.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Meyer, go ahead.
Oh, uh, yes, I'm really concerned about the recent rallies, um, at the Napa Valley High School and NBUSD. Um, I know that contacted, where Napa, that Napa Valley High School was contacted, NBUSD was contacted, school security, Napa Police, City Council, City Manager. Yet, when I drove by, I saw no security in place. I saw multiple students trying to get out of school at three o'clock, uh, walking by unmasked, shouting, uh, protesters exposing themselves to COVID. I saw parents struggling to pick up their children. I saw jammed-up traffic, put, uh, there's a potential, a dangerous potential of parent, uh, violent parent interaction, children being COVID, uh, COVID-exposed, um, and car accidents because of the, um, the disruption. So I understand free speech. I know that they get to be there, but I think that security is needed. Um, I want my granddaughter to be safe. She's in sixth grade. Um, so I am a pro-vax, pro-max person, uh, and
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Everyone's aware that the next
Thank, thank you, Ms. Meyer. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Jeremy Rarick. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, I just make this real short. Tomorrow I get to bury my nephew, um, two days after he had the vaccine from a double heart attack. Um, this is happening more and more than what people are saying. He had the vaccine, had a headache, took him to the hospital and, uh, it's hard for me to even say, took him to the hospital and they sent him home because they said that that just means the vaccine's working. And, uh, the next morning, he was dead from a double heart attack. So kids are getting hurt by this. This isn't something, this is something the board really needs to look into and understand that there, I mean, regardless if it's a small amount or a big amount, kids are dying. That's it.
Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Yes, next speaker is Shauna Lee Abbott. Go ahead, please.
Um, I'm so sorry for Jeremy's loss, and that's exactly what I wanted to speak to. Um, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, VAERS, requires healthcare providers to report certain adverse events of vaccines. Harvard did three different studies in two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, two thousand and fifteen, which showed how vastly under-reported those adverse events were. They estimate only one percent of the cases get reported, one percent. And with that in mind, we have a sixty percent increase per deaths of COVID. That's nine thousand one hundred and forty-one people who have died from the COVID vaccines and all other vaccines. For the last twenty-one years, there's only been, oh, I got those numbers wrong. The, there's fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven deaths from COVID and only nine thousand one hundred and forty-one from all the other vaccines over the last twenty-one years. This is not safe for our kids, and we should not be exposing them to this. And keep your kids out of school on Monday.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Karina Campos. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask nicely, um, as well about, uh, that I oppose the vaccine mandate. Please, please do this for our kids, for the future of our kids. Um, as we don't know what the effects is, this is gonna have, um, for them when they are older. Um, you know, I beg you guys for, to please consider that, consider your grandkids, consider if you guys have any kids. Um, as, like I said, we don't know what this holds for them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Uh, yes, next speaker is Rachel Clark. Go ahead. Yes, next speaker is Rachel Clark. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Clark and it's eleven P.M. in school board night. It's a shame that this has been pushed out all the way to the very end. I've served two terms on Napa County Grand Jury. I've served on various committees. And I can tell you and assure you that I've seen a lot of different things happen here in this meeting tonight. That have violated the Brown Act and I'm very disappointed in this board. If you shall discuss this vaccine and mandate again. You need to make this one of the only topics at this meeting and allow the community to come and weigh in. I am against this. I oppose it. I know people that have died from this. I know people that have been permanently injured by this. And I don't co-parent with the government and I don't think our schools should use our children as. Guinea pigs, you know, kind of like the five G towers that you have allowed on our property and our school properties. So I'm opposed to it. And I did not like how this school board has ran things this evening. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Anna K. Go ahead, please.
Hi there, I just want to state that I strongly oppose these vaccine mandates in our schools. I'm against them. There are absolutely no long-term studies done. At all. And you are expecting us to give our children medication that we don't know what could happen, the long-term effects. It's ridiculous. Children are not being affected seriously by this virus and yet you are possibly going to force thousands of kids to be vaccinated. Please put yourself in our shoes. We are just concerned, parents trying to do what is best for our kids. Keep your kids out of school on Monday.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is named KT. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm just calling in to say I strongly oppose any vaccine mandates. Science surely isn't the driving factor here with you all and you should all really be ashamed of yourselves for disregarding the science. And neglecting to serve your community and the children of your community. As it's been stated, there's no long-term studies on what these shots will do to the children and their bodies. And the fact that the children who are the future are just being disregarded completely is pretty, pretty disturbing. I hope you reconsider.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Crystal Newton. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I strongly am opposed to the vaccine mandates for children. I have plenty of personal experiences with people who have had adverse reactions to the vaccines and these are adults. Let alone putting these vaccines into children who are less than half the weight of an adult. These are against our constitutional rights. We are having our rights stripped from us. And we are being forced to, to give our children vaccines that are not even approved that could harm them. I am not opposed to vaccines. I am strongly opposed to the COVID vaccine. And there is not any long-term studies to show that our children will be safe. And it should be our choice. I'm not saying do not vaccinate your children. I'm saying let me have a choice to vaccinate or not vaccinate mine. I don't want to homeschool my children, but that is my only option if this gets approved.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Karina A. Go ahead, please.
Hi there. To Deppa Valley Unified School District. For the, the past few years now, we keep hearing that we're experiencing a decline on enrollment. Have you guys thought about what this will do to the district? We will start pulling our children from the district should this pass. I'm a mother of two who strongly opposes vaccine mandates. Parents should be the ones making these choices for our children, not you, not the government. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mrs. Johnson. Go ahead, please.
Mrs. Johnson, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I'm sad to hear of all the violence and the discrimination that's going on in your campuses and. These vaccine mandates are only going to increase that situation. I strongly oppose the vaccine and the vaccine mandates and the mask mandates. The bandana, the one of your guys is wearing, that's, that's not even a legitimate mask. I strongly recommend that if you, that parents pull their kids out of your schools. I would never send my kid there, never again. And keep your kids, if anything, out of school on Monday. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Michaels.
Next speaker is Jacqueline. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I, I had a whole thing I wanted to say. I'm a healthcare provider. I have a lot of things that I would like to address, but of course I'm down to a minute. So you know, we had a fifteen-year-old. In a neighboring county pass away two days after their second dose of the COVID vaccine. We've had zero children die in Napa of COVID. I don't want to see a child in our county lost to a vaccine injury, especially when you and the manufacturers have no liability. But don't worry, that will be on your backs. We will make sure of it if you pass this. That's going to be on your conscience. I believe our children need to be unmasked in person and have bodily autonomy. We as parents get to make these decisions, not you. You know these vaccines aren't protecting you from COVID. If they did, you wouldn't have your masks on right now. You know vaccinated staff have been out with COVID and exposing our children. Many of our kids already have natural antibodies. This is just unacceptable. And again, is it possible that what you are doing is causing more harm than good? I think we know the answer with that, with all the violence we heard tonight.
Next speaker.
Speaker is Lindsay Kling. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I had a lot to say about our earlier conversation, but the first thing I will say to stay on topic is that I. Behemothly oppose these vaccine mandates for our kids. To echo what Jacqueline, the caller before me said, it is not your decision what we do with our kids. You're not healthcare professionals. You're a school board. The bottom line is that all of this is highly illegal. And you should be really afraid of what's going to fall on your desks. When people. Hold you to the fire, like this is not okay and it's not going to be okay and it's never been okay. You're not allowed to make decisions about our kids' bodies. We're their parents and we make the decisions. So. That's it, I guess.
Next, next speaker.
Next speaker is Aisley Wallace Harper. Go ahead, please.
Hi, um, many of the people speaking tonight don't actually have any connection to the schools in our district. Their children, if any, are grown and they're in their thirties. And the only reason they're here is to preach conspiracies, anti-vax and max stance, mask stances. And to pray on uneducated individuals who are now being fed this misinformation. We already have vaccine mandates for other diseases and I think every level-headed person on that board knows that this is purely political and not based. In or on science. Napa is behind you. The real moms and students and those connected to schools are behind you and the reason. They aren't here tonight is surprisingly because they believe in you. And hope and believe that you will not bow down to this. When they say that you should be afraid and scared, it's because they are. So please keep up the good work and thank you so much for all that you're doing and your patience tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Todd. Go ahead, please.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I am a young Napa parent, born and raised in Napa. I am opposed to mandating the vaccine mandate on children. Please do what is morally right. This obviously affects family morals and families are the foundation. Of our community and our country. They are the future of our community and our country. Please consider that. Many vaccines have been out for years and decades and proven safe. This one has only been out a year. Please do the right thing. This is not an issue you get to simply put on your political resume. This is our life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Amy Markinson. Go ahead, please.
So first I'd like to say I agree with Rachel Clark. I've served on a board. I've been to many board meetings and city council meetings and I've never seen anything like this. Especially when people wait until eleven o'clock at night to be limited to one minute. It's outrageous. I've never seen, while you might have the right to do this, I've never actually seen anybody actually do it. It's extremely disrespectful. I'm actually going to request three minutes. I'm totally against the vaccine mandates, but that's not what I wanted to talk about. I'm an employee and I wanted to talk about the COVID guidance for schools. It's a different topic and I need more than a minute to address the board. So I'm requesting that I have my full three minutes to talk about something different as an employee, some concerns about the COVID protocols in schools. Can I have some more time?
This is the agenda item, Ms. Markinson. So your time, you have ten seconds to talk about the topic.
Okay, well, you know what? I can't do it in ten seconds. So this is how crazy. I've never seen anything like this.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is David. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm calling to oppose the vaccine mandates. And you know, what we're witnessing right now, we should all take kind of a moment to really breathe in. We're, we're really witnessing the degradation of the integrity of this, this body here, of this institution that we should be able to trust. And it's very sad. It's abundantly clear that the science is, does not support. Vaccine mandates for anyone, let alone for children. It simply doesn't exist. And you're choosing to pretend like you're doing something that is protecting these children in our community when it is explicitly not. And it's very sad to see. And we will be opposed to this and we will not allow this to take place. We will be taking our children out of school.
Thank you for your comment. We have now reached the twenty-minute mark, so we've dedicated the allotted time. So.
I'd like to, just for a point of clarification, I, I think the board's clear on this, but for the public, this is an informational item. You know, this, which means that it is not under action. It's, the board is not taking any action. Items that are under the informational section of our agenda are not action items. And if you read the agenda item closely, it explains that the masking. The, the state, the potential, the future, because it's not a current. Student vaccine mandate that is going to happen in the future according to. The governor. And so these decisions are not within our jurisdiction and the item explains that and that these are. Decisions and action items that are happening at the state level. From California Department of Public Health and the governor's office. So it's an informational item that the school district has to enact. The state mandates. And to be clear, I think the board is clear. I'll just restate it. You do not take action on these items because whatever comes from. Our, the state-level authorities, departments, divisions, we are by law to follow them. So that's, that's explained in the agenda item and I just want to. Be clear that this board will not be taking actions on things that are mandate mandated by Sacramento. So to influence the decisions. The, the. Some of the comments tonight, it's fine. It's an informational, but I just want to develop and make sure that. We're being explicit and developing the understanding of the public and the community. So to influence these decisions, this content is really to be directed at. Our folks in Sacramento because they are the ones that make those decisions. We have to implement them. So I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, that's a great clarification. Thank you, Dr. Mazzani.
I, I too just wanted to highlight that at the end of the day, the place you need to make your voices heard. Is at the governor's office. He's the one that has announced this mandate. He's the one that is imposing this mandate upon you. It doesn't have anything to do with us. We are simply following the rules that were given. And at the end of the day, it is the California Department of Public Health and the governor that have put this into place. So I understand there's a lot of strong feelings around this topic. And I encourage you to express those feelings to the authority that will have the ability to make a difference. In the implementation of this policy and that is the governor's office.
Thank you, Tussie Garcia. Okay, we are now moving on to item L two A. This is the timeline for review and action on the charter petition for Maya Commiss Charter Middle School. Again, this is an informational item. I do want to ask. Because we also expect that this item may be of high interest. And we'd like to know how many participants we have wanting to provide public comments. So if you would like to comment on this item, if you could raise your hand. And I will ask Dr. Mazzani to.
Again, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak to this informational item. Now we're just seeing five hands. Any other hands to speak to item L two A so we can do a count here? Okay, looks like you have five.
Okay.
Five public speakers on this, this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. We could invite our first speaker.
Three minutes, Mr. Michaels.
Yes, three minutes. Thank you. The first speaker is Sherry Debo. Go ahead, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that these meetings should be in person. You all should be ashamed of yourself. The fact that you cut that last thing down to one minute and then many people didn't even use their full time. I just can't even believe it. We are going to be putting a suit on your desks and it's a lie when you're saying we just need to take it up with the governor. That is not true. You have the power to stop what has been going down. You are our school board. You have the power to change these. I, I can't even believe when you have a fellow employee.
Mr. Bo, are you going to comment on the charter petition?
No, I'm not going to.
Okay, then thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Dan Lince. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. Long night. So I am a parent of a former River School student. And a past River School Board member and the Maya Camus Charter Middle School is. Being put in place to fill the void from the Lost River, which was a beloved, innovative, inclusive and popular school with a foundation of project-based learning. And community building. The Education Code, Section four seven six oh five specifies that a local school district should grant a charter position. If it is satisfied that granting the charter is consistent with sound educational practice and with the interest of the community. River School spent decades of educational success so well that other schools came to copy it. The School Accountability Report from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty had four hundred and seventeen, seventeen students. That went through a lottery to get into the school because they had limited space. And it's a shame that the school was moved and brought in the district to get it more space to increase the enrollment. But that's water under the bridge. But I would like to urge the board, as it considers this going forward, to grant this charter to fill the void for the four hundred students that no longer have a place to embrace that kind of community learning. And I will add a note that in all the comments tonight about violence, River School and I would be willing to bet that New Tech Network, which are community-based, project-based learning schools, spend a tremendous amount of time through project learning and community enhancement, don't have the kind of violence issues that we are finding in the other schools. And I would look to this teaching model to help guide you in reducing those problems at the other schools. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Kim Smith. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I wanted to start. It is a late night. I'm a Napa resident. I have two kids. One is currently at River and the other is at New Tech. I've worked with many, many schools and districts across the country over the last thirty years and I wanted to start by saying I know how hard it is to run great schools and how difficult it is to run districts as well and that it's clearly much, much more difficult right now during COVID. So I first wanted to start by just thanking you for your public service. I don't, I don't always agree with all the decisions you all make, but I do believe you are public servants and I appreciate the time and energy you're putting into that. So I wanted to start with that. I wanted to speak to this public item before you go into the official consideration to say I do think it fills a void as the last speaker said. I think it's important to invest in innovation. I was disappointed to see that in the SR proposal, there really wasn't much of any innovation or personalized learning. And that the consolidation you've had to do over the last few years, while helpful to operational simplicity, has not been good for adolescents who do not thrive in large middle school settings. So I like the Maya Camus model. I encourage you to consider it with your governance hat on, even though management may not be fans of charter schools or other kinds of innovation. You're elected to represent the whole community. And as a parent with two adolescent kids, I would ask you to think about that school as an opportunity to serve the whole community rather than to just make the decision that management may be most comfortable with. It's going to offer personalized learning, deeper social emotional learning, project-based learning. It's a smaller environment that works much better for many adolescents as they find their voice. And it is a feeder to the New Tech school. And with a kid at New Tech, I can really appreciate why having a middle school in that feeder pattern would be helpful. I also think they're gonna create an innovation opportunity to really pay attention to deeper critical thinking and twenty-first century learning skills in a way that's much harder to do at large scale. And so having some smaller learning environments, I think are really important in the community. And if it's not possible to do that within the district structure, then I think it's important for you to allow charter schools to make that possible to those of us in the community who need that to have an environment where our kids can be successful. So thank you for your time and I look forward to the future meetings where you'll be taking it up for deeper discussion.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Olivia Bennett. Go ahead, please.
Actually, I'm Olivia's father. My name is Jeremiah Bennett. And I'm Olivia Bennett's father and she's a student at Valley Oak right now, but I'm actually like to take a second before I talk on this subject to go back to the fact that the emergency authorized vaccines are only good for the alpha and beta strain of COVID. And right now, those have already run their course. Right now, we're dealing with Delta, other variants. There's no point in this vaccine. There is zero point.
Mr. Bennett, can you please, please keep your comment to the charter?
Start beginning to speak and let us know that it's only an informational conversation, that you're not going to take any action on. And hiding behind this, this plausible deniability of, oh, it's all on the governor.
Mr. Bennett, are you going to speak on the charter?
You will. I will. I'll get to that. This stuff has to get talked about. This is the first time you have all these people wanting to talk about it. You push it off to nighttime. You put it off till eleven o'clock before you let them speak and then you cut their time in half. And then you're going to try and act like there's nothing you can do about it. It's offensive, to be completely honest. And you are going to see some lawsuit if you don't.
Mr. Bennett, you're not talking on the item. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Are there any more speakers, Mr. Michaels?
There is no further comment.
Okay. Thank you. We have now ended our informational item on L two A. Any questions from the board on that informational item? We're good? Okay, thank you. Now, item L three A, this is the chronic absenteeism report. Any questions? And now, item M, additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent.
I would like to thank Emily Bit for her perspective on American Canyon High School, which is generally a pretty calm place. And, you know, bringing the students in to problem solve is a great idea. Thank you. You have a very even head and good ideas.
Thank you, Trusty Water. Completely agree. Thank you, Emily, for sharing your perspective, which is we're so glad you're here because of that. All right, anything else to add? None? All right, future agenda items?
I have two. One is EB four thirty-eight has just recently passed. And I would be interested to see how that will be affecting the district and what we will be doing to deal with the problems raised by that law. So I'd like to see a presentation on that item. And then two, I understand this is quite of a, quite a long-term future item, but nonetheless, I'll make the request anyway. I'd like to have a comprehensive review of the STAR program in two thousand twenty-four, near the end of the final contract year, but prior to any potential future renewal by the board.
Fair enough.
I'll put that on the future agenda items log. Thank you, Trusty Garcia. I noted it already when you pulled the item from consent, so thank you.
Right, last item, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
First by trustee Garcia.
Second.
Second by trustee Julie, student board rep.
Hi.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Good night.